Okay, go ahead Kevin.
Okay, thank you, thank you Ms. Robertson and thank you everybody for your patience so we can get this going a couple of minutes late but we appreciate it. I want to call the April 27th, 2020 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission for Order via remote meeting software. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem.
Here.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan. Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster. Mr. Oster.
Mo, you're muted.
He's saying that he's here.
Okay, um, Clark, can you go back to Jangus because I think he just joined?
Okay, um, Mr. Khan. Mr. Khan. Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Hi, sir.
Chairman Walsh.
Here, and just for a point of clarification, I'm not sure if Mr. Khan was able to log in or not. And if not, Ms. Gold will, will take the seat on the board until Mr. Khan is available, okay? Alright, so we're all set with that and we'll move on to first order business is the approval of minutes from the February 24th, 2020 meeting. They were included in your packet. Can I have a motion for approval for the, of the minutes for February 24th? Anybody?
Mr. Oster is signaling.
Mr. Oster, okay.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
And seconded by Mr. Scrubby Tennis, thank you. Uh, any discussion, comments, or corrections? I have none. They look good to me. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no comments, all those in favor of approval of the minutes from the February 24th meeting, be signified by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Any hearing no, excuse me? Nope, hearing none opposed, then we'll, uh, minutes from February 24th are approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we're gonna move right to privilege of the floor and for privilege of the floor, we're gonna turn over to Mr. Robertson to see what she's got for us tonight.
Okay, so, um, we did open it up for the public to be able to speak and Doug McFadden has a login. Doug, are you on the line right now? He's practicing. Doug McFadden, can you make sure you're not muted and, and if you are unmuted yourself and speak under privilege of the floor? Okay, I will check my email for him and in the meantime, I'm just going to read the privilege of the floor comment.
Laura, while you're doing that, Mr. Khan has joined the meeting.
Can, can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, I'm on. I think I was muted before by you guys, so I managed to undo that. Sorry I'm here, but I'm here now. Sorry I'm at least, I'm here now.
Okay, so this comment is from David Safi from 4033 Windsor Drive. And he writes, honorable members of the Niskiuna Town Planning Board, my comment is in regard to the proposed traffic study being done for Windsor Drive. Because of the current COVID-19 crisis, the company is going to use a methodology consisting of historical data, cell phone, or GPS data to arrive on the volume of traffic going through Windsor Drive. I have a concern that this data could be very misleading based on the time of day, month the historical data was collected. In addition, if a cellphone or GPS is not being used, would those vehicles be tracked? Would it not be better to wait until September when schools and businesses will be back to gather this data in real time? Also, on many discussions, there seems to be a hesitation in changing the town plan. On this division, why are you allowing to change the town plan designation from low-density residential to average-density residence? So, thank you. So Doug McFadden. Are you on the line?
Did Mr. McFadden also provide his comments via email written?
No, he did not. He practiced, um, he practiced today and it went really well and he was comfortable logging in. I have no written comments from him and I don't see him on the call, so I think that concludes all the comments that we have so far.
Right, if there's a, if there's a mix-up and Mr. McFadden comes forward like, links up with us, we can probably make an exception to give him an opportunity to speak if he turns in, okay?
Okay.
Alright, okay, so that concludes our privilege of the floor and we have no unfinished business tonight, so we're moving to new business. Another new business, we have a couple of items to take care of, first being Resolution 2020-13. A resolution for site plan approval for America's Best Contacts and Eyeglasses at 418 Balltown Road, Suite B. Um, and in a keeping, the resolution was posted on the web and available to everybody, but I'll just give, uh, just a quick, uh, basis of what's included in the resolution. It basically states that the Planning Board and zoning commission finds America's Best Contacts and Eyeglass Site Plan meets the requirements of the zoning code in previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change. Do I have a motion for approval for the America's Best Resolution 2020-13?
Motion, this is Jangus.
Okay, a motion for adoption by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Alright, second that.
Just to make sure it's Mr. LaFlem seconding that. And I know that Mr. Durkin is available online, so at this point in time, if there's any questions for the applicant or if the applicant would like to, um, add anything and hopefully had an opportunity to read the resolution. Mr. Durkin, do you have anything for us? And Mr. Durkin, maybe you're on mute, I don't know Laura if you can see him or not. He was here earlier.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and efforts and we appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Durkin, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, we did discuss this during, um, our meeting, our last meeting as a discussion item. And it seemed to be, you know, be reasonable, especially since what previously was vision work, so it's kind of a one-for-one swap. It seems appropriate, so. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments regarding the resolution? Like plan? Okay, seeing none, then Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye, the resolutions unanimously approved. Uh, Mr. Durkin, thank you. I would look forward to America's Contacts and Eyeglasses coming to Niskiuna and I wish you best of luck.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, uh, next up, we have a, um, a recommendation to the ZBA regarding the Dominican Retreat House and that's for signage, uh, variances regarding signage. And the Dominican Retreat House is at 1945 Union Street. And what I'd like to do is just kind of summarize, uh, what we need to do here and then I'll, I'll ask Mr. Scrubby Tennis to make a motion, um, on the different items on our recommendation to go forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So basically, the Dominican Retreat House is in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. And we refer to Section 220-22A10 of the zoning code of the Town and Niskiuna. Uh, and that section says, in residential and conservation districts, one legally non-residential use is permitted one sign. And as proposed, there are two signs, um, in this application. So therefore, variance for one sign, one additional sign is required. Also, freestanding signs shall be ground-mounted, monument signs only. Uh, ground signs are defined as a freestanding sign whose entire bottom is in contact with or within close proximity of the ground. So that's within two feet of the ground. So the two proposed signs are 3.5 and 3.8 feet above the ground, therefore there's two variances required, one for each. 1.5 foot variance and a 1.8 foot variance. So we have basically three area variances required. Number, one extra sign and the, uh, the proximity to the ground for each sign. Um, that's pretty much it. So we have three questions that we need to answer and to make our recommendations to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so I'll ask, opinion on the first one, which is the effect on the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, after reviewing the comprehensive plan, um, I see no specific reference to signage regarding that district. Um, I don't see that the presence of the signs or the dimensions are, are, are inconsistent or, uh, are certainly not, um, detrimental to, and have no meaningful effect on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so the recommendation from Mr. Scrubby Tennis is no effect on the comprehensive plan? And what I'd like to do is again, just go, uh, anybody, um, all those in favor of, of, who agree with no effect on the comprehensive plan, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Khan? Anybody opposed?
Oh, and I just wanted to clarify, we write down to the zoning board in our memo, um, you know, just why you guys vote the way you do. So I would, I would just, if anybody had anything to add besides what Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Yep, yeah, yeah, just waiting for Mr. Khan, looks like he had a little problem and dropped out.
No, 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 so, I'm, I'm sure, I'm, I'm on audio right now.
Okay, so the question was, Mr. Khan, uh, no effect on comprehensive plan?
I had said, I had said aye.
Okay, aye, thank you, I just wasn't clear. Okay, so that's unanimous, no effect on the comprehensive plan. Uh, as Mr. Scrubby Tennis stated, uh, can't find anywhere in a comprehensive plan that would, uh, any, this, what this project would impact. But also just like to add that, you know, there is one sign already, uh, it's just a matter of the height from the sign. And, um, just one new sign, which isn't actually on Union Street or Route 7, it's on Rosendale Road, so I believe it's a minimum, minimum effect. Or no effect on the comprehensive plan, okay? So the next question is suitability of use in the area proposed. Um, Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Um, I believe given the fact that there's an existing sign, uh, on Route 7, uh, noting the Dominican Retreat House Center, that the replacement of that sign is certainly suitable and the addition of the additional sign on Rosendale Road, in fact, um, helps wayfinding and clarifies, uh, ingress and egress of the site. Um, so I think it's a suitable use, tasteful, given the location of a, of the sign and its dimensions.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Scrubby Tennis, so the recommendation is that yes, is a suitable use for the area proposed? All those in favor of that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone disagree with that, opposed? Okay, anyone disagree? Alright, we'll give some data or some, some specifics. I know Mr. Scrubby Tennis, you mentioned, um, uh, that it would be a benefit over for clarification on Rosendale Road. So basically Laura, we've included in the note that it's safety for driver clarification along Rosendale Road. Uh, congregation Oguda Akim has their exit over there and this would help, uh, uh, drivers to understand the, the back way or the other way to get into the Dominican Retreat House, alright?
In fact, I went down the one-way street in order to, I got turned around over there, uh, Mr. Chairman, and tried to locate this, they're just exploring the area. I went down the one-way road.
There you go. Um, so, and I'd also like to add that I believe the request is minimal. Uh, we're not looking for a large area variance, uh, you know, just a minimum to be able to, may have a functional signs at both locations. And also like to add, and Mr., um, uh, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Wheeler, um, the sign on Rosendale Road is not a, a, a lit sign, is that correct?
Correct, it's not illuminated.
So I think that's important also from a suitability standpoint, so it won't impact any of the neighbors because there won't be any light pollution or stray light from the signage over there in that neighborhood. Um, and the other thing, I know I got a lot here and I apologize, but along Route 7 also, if you take a look at the current sign, it's kind of busy over there, there's, uh, there's several, uh, I guess, street or directional signs, uh, some guy wires and everything, so, um, I don't think this is a detriment and therefore, and it's suitable just based on the location, so it would help the drivers to, uh, find the entrance to, uh, the Dominican Retreat House. Anybody else have any other thoughts or passing this on to the Zoning Board of Appeals? And, um, and also Laura, you mentioned in your agenda statement, it's actually, uh, lower and smaller than the existing sign, so I think that's also important to include. Okay, so we're all set on suitability for use and the final thing is our recommendation for, for the ZBA. Will we recommend that they grant or deny this area variance, Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Um, I, I'd like to, uh, I recommend that they approve the area variance.
Alright, recommendation is a grant, approve the area variances. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye? Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Is anyone opposed at all? No, okay, thank you, Mr. Scrubby Tennis. So we have our recommendation as zoning board. Um, all positive, comprehensive plan suitability and a positive recommendation. Zoning Board meeting is this, uh, Wednesday, right Laura, at 7 o'clock? So, um, um, Mr. Wheeler, well, um, I believe that'll be live streamed also, Laura, the zoning board appeals meeting?
It is, yep, it'll be live streamed just like this one.
Okay, great, and.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good luck with the ZBA and, uh, hopefully it works out, okay? And Laura, I think that's it too for us, just recommendation on this, if this goes through the ZBA, just be building permit process, is that correct?
Um, you guys could ask it back for a final site plan, you do have that power, um, but you could also defer to the zoning board and then you can just go to building permit.
Yeah, I, I would propose whatever is easier there because I think it's pretty straightforward, but, uh, it's, I'll, I'll leave it up to the planning department to make that, uh, recommendation, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Great, thank you.
Um, Kevin, I want to note, um, Doug McFadden was able to get on, he was having trouble with the link. So if we wanted to return to the privilege of the floor really quick, it's sort of a good break for discussions now?
It's perfect. Yes, Mr. McFadden, um, welcome and you can go ahead. And, uh, he's there, he, he may be on mute. I don't see him.
He did join the meeting.
He's there, he's there.
Doug, can you hear him?
Is it, is it possible that we have him muted?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't show him muted, let me just check. So. Let me, um. Do you want to do the next agenda item and let me see if, um, I really apologize, I know we're trying to make the privilege of the floor work and this is the first time, but he has an email potentially, I can ask him if he just wants me to read that email, um, and that way his comments will still be in the record.
Yep, that's right. Alright, so you want me to go, I'll go forward on the agenda Laura while you're working on it, okay?
Yeah, okay.
The next section of the agenda is just, well, not just, but it's important of course, our discussion items. And the first item, uh, tonight is, uh, 2220 Crescent Road, net site plan approval for Cosmetology Electrology Store by Ms. Gail King. Um, Mr. Khan's the project lead and so I, uh, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Khan and we'll jump in to help him out, how's that?
Yep. So everyone is seeing the, um, the information, right?
Yep.
And I think it's in accordance with what we had discussed with, um, with Frank. Um, actually, just give me a second here, I actually just lost it, hang on, hang on for a second.
No problem.
Laura, are you able to share, are, are you able to share?
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Khan, you're referring to the, uh, the packet which, uh, shows a, uh, they had a surveyor improve the, uh, the package with some more details and an updated.
Yeah, yeah.
Site plan by Mr. Herba, right?
Right.
And I think that the major change that I saw, Mr. Khan, it was at the handicap ramp, um, and.
Right.
Leave, it leave some increased vegetation that we're requesting for shielding of the parking spaces.
Right, right. Yeah, so, yeah, here, I'm, yes, and I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my copy, right?
No problem.
But I think, I mean, but I think that is, um, I think the ramp is appropriate, right?
Yep. Yep, one thing, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the only thing that jumped out at me, um, is that, yep, we got the ramp and we have the parking spots identified, uh, over there. But is there, is there a requirement, and I know we've run it this once in a while before, for a handicap parking? And where would that be delineated, delineated? Um, and I don't know if they could park, uh, the handicap could be a sign along Crescent Ave in front of the building? Uh, because it looks like it'd be quite the path to get from the rear parking, uh, for somebody handicapped to get to the.
Yeah, so I think, I think, I think the handicap spot has to be on Crescent, right? It has to link up and I think that was probably their intent, I'm not sure why it's not mentioned.
Yep.
Um.
Yep, that was, uh, seemed like the biggie to me, um, I'm looking at my notes also here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Herba on. I, I think, yeah, but then we get into this discussion we've had before about making spots available on Crescent.
Yeah, so if you guys, if you guys want to be there with me, I think Mr. Herba did some, recently submit a plan that shows the, um, angled parking on Crescent, if you want me to bring it up?
Okay.
Wait, see if I can.
That wasn't included in the packet, right Laura?
No, I think he just emailed it just very recently. Yeah, here it is, let's just pull it up for you. And it's just, it's just. It's awkward on my home computer because I do not have Adobe Acrobat, but here, I'll show it to you.
And while we're waiting for it to come up, and I think that one of the concerns with, with that, um, the angled parking on Crescent was just the character of the residential neighborhood, is that right, Mr. Khan?
Yes, right, I mean, especially for the other side of the street, but like we've mentioned in previous meetings, um, you know, to main, to maintain commercial mixed use on that side of the street, there is some parking that will need to happen on Crescent.
Yeah, and we had talked about potentially the parallel parking, um, this is a.
Yeah, so.
The, um, angled parking and he does have handicap sp- spaces marked out if you guys can see that.
Yeah, but I think, um, but I think we had always wanted to keep that as parallel parking, right? I don't think, right?
Well, and the only reason that I just would potentially, I mean, it's. Yes, I think the last time we talked about it, we wanted to look at it as parallel, but we do know that, you know, the county is going to change the parking configuration of that, you know, co-op, and if you're looking at it holistically and we need more parking spaces to, to serve our town center overlay district, this is a potential. Um, but it's kind of a larger discussion. The Complete Streets looked at it and they were initially, just initially looking at it, a little in favor of providing angled parking spaces along Crescent Ave as long as they were interspaced with green space so that the residential properties were protected and that there was good landscaping and, you know, and it made, it was an upgrade, hopefully, to the area that wouldn't detract from property values.
So, but there's probably only enough space to maybe put in two, two with most three green islands there, right? I mean.
Between the apartment buildings? Um, I don't know, you'd have to do, I think you sort of have to look at the whole corridor. I, I think it would be a mistake to piece me out and figure out, you know, how it works in one section without figuring out how it works along the entire street. But obviously, if somebody's willing to put it in now as part of their site plan, that's beneficial, but I still think you should probably look at the corridor on, on.
No, no, I agree it's the corridor, but even knowing the length of Crescent, right? I think, um, I think, uh, I mean, to have enough spots and enough green space islands, we, we'll probably only end up with two or three of those islands. I don't know, I mean, we have to see a drawing for it, right?
Yeah.
Is Mr. Herba on tonight?
He practiced with us, he signed right in, but I did not see him on the call.
Okay. Alright, uh, yeah, you know, I think, uh, that's the first I've seen that drawing, um, I guess I, for me, I'd like to, you know, get over there and, uh, with the drawing in hand and take a look to see, you know, how that fits with the, you know, the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. Obviously, uh, you know, there could be some benefit with the, uh, angled parking, uh, you know, about, you know, as long as you come back into traffic appropriately. You know, it might, it might service the, uh, the people that live in those apartments along with any potential future businesses, but I need to get over there personally and take a look at that.
Yeah. And if you, if you let me know when you want to go, Chairman Walsh, maybe, um, maybe we could look at it together. Um, but the one thing I think, the one thing I think that's critical is, so right now his plan does not show a handicap spot, it does show the ramp. Um, unless he's able to put the handicap spot on Crescent, then we're gonna have a, we're gonna have an inconsistency with the handicap access to the ramp from the current spot to the back of the property. So. So I think at some point, a decision needs to get made as to what kind of configuration of parking will we as a board? You know, we'd raised this issue before, right, what kind of parking configuration will we as a board recommend for Crescent? Right, in this, in this CN, CN side of it.
Right, yeah, it's too bad Mr. Herba isn't online, um, because I think as far as this application goes, we're, we're in pretty good shape. It's just strictly the site plan regarding the parking, uh, and whether or not we have the angle or parallel parking along Crescent in the, in the handicap spot, is that right, Mr. Khan?
Yes, as it is.
We're getting darn close, um, and, um, I think we sense, it looked like the date on the, uh, the angled parking was probably just the 24th Laura. So we really didn't, we didn't really have an opportunity to review that. So I think what we'll do is I'll give Mr. Khan a call and I'll meet him over there at his convenience and we'll just take a look with the, with the drawing and a map in hand. See how that, um, you know, see if we can buy into that and it makes sense and then make a recommendation back to the rest of you all. Does that sound reasonable, Mr. Khan?
Yes, sir, that's reasonable.
Alright, and, and is there any other open items that you're aware of or Laura regarding this application?
No, I think, um, probably just final engineering blessing, although we can mark that into a final resolution, I guess. The question would be, you, if you want to call for a tentative final resolution or if you want to wait, um, to take a look at the parking and get sort of a final, final drawing, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I guess I'd leave that Mr. Khan's recommendation, um.
I mean, I, I would like to, I would like for us to be able to make a, a determined, um, a determined recommendation on the parking on Crescent.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, because I think, yeah, the, you know, the linkage to, you know, that property being used as a business is, is, um, being the first one, setting the precedent is, is important enough.
Okay, so the plan is we will put it on for a discussion item at our May meeting and get a, get a sense of how we wanted that final parking handicap configuration, handicap ramp access situation to work. Because I actually think if you look at that, you'd remove the six parking spots on the other side of the property, so it is quite a different plan if we want to consider it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was looking at that and I wasn't sure, seeing it for the first time, but it does seem like those parking spots are gone, right?
Yeah, it's in, it's off the map, but it, I'm not sure why you would necessarily need them.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think, I think having it as a discussion item for the next meeting and I was taking a look at whatever, and you'll email us that map?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Um, there is one question I have, the tenant that was going to get, you know, removed from the place where Gail's going to use it as her office, what's the status of that?
Um, I don't, because I'm, I don't know, I'm not even sure that she's fully closed on the property still, I think she's, um, still in negotiations and waiting on final approval. But I think you did mention before that they were month-to-month rentals.
Okay, so if we can find out exactly, I mean, just given the crisis and everything else that's going on, right? And, um, we just want to make sure that, well, I'd just like to know what the details are of that tenant's relocation.
Okay.
Alright, and, uh, yeah, I'll hook up with you, Mr. Khan. Now Laura, I don't know if Mr. Herba can hear us, if he's online. But, uh, nonetheless, maybe you can, you or Mr. Henry can, um, can call Frank and let him know what, you know, that we want to take a look at it and he's welcome to, to meet us there or Yale if they want also, okay?
I think that's a good idea.
So, Mr. Khan, let's work through Laura with any email appointments on that, so in case there's anybody else that wants to join in. And of course, anybody else from the planning board that would like to go over and take a look, right?
Right, absolutely, I mean, we can hope it like we always do. And one last thing, the, the planning board, do we have the authority to recommend the, the parking angled or parallel on that street? But have it be?
I think actually the town board has to weigh in because it's in the right way.
Right.
Yeah, and we may want to have the, the police look at it, usually we forward that on and obviously we haven't done that yet since this is relatively new, right?
And highway.
And that's great, so we have time to do that, if we just have it for discussion next meeting, that'll work out fine.
Yeah, yeah. I think those are all the points that I had, I'm, I'm sorry that I lost the, the, the images in front of me, but, but thanks for being able to share it, Laura.
Yeah, I can pull up any more if you still want to talk about them.
That works out great, and the other thing is, oh, you said the engineering is, is that being looked at in-house, Laura?
Yeah, because it's very minimal, I think the engineering department was going to try and look at it themselves.
Okay, and we'll get something, we could get something if they're ready by the discussion the next meeting, the May 11th, we could have something, you know, any comments from them, whether they're okay with it or not, that'd be nice also.
Okay. So, Doug can drop off the line, I did get ahold of him via email, and he did send comments for me to read under privilege of the floor.
Laura, are you there?
Oh.
Laura? Hi, it's Doug McFadden.
Oh, you got it.
I'm sorry to interrupt the meeting, I don't know what was going on, have you, if you've read my comments and Koon Tang's comments, I don't, I'm not going to make you suffer through more of that, you, you, those are my points, have you already done that?
No, we haven't, nope.
Well, well, I'll, I'll, just let me know when you want me to make them, and I will, because Koon is not going to be on the line tonight.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's a good time, because we're between items under discussion, so I would suggest we do it now?
All right, thank you, Kevin, and Laura. So, we're talking about 2520 Vincenzo Road, the add-on homes two, three, and four, and I guess the first comment we, we had was that we, we feel like home number one, which has been built and is now currently occupied, should have been included in the drainage study, and that's because a couple of us neighbors are getting stormwater runoff, one at 1385 Row Road, and myself at 1388. Also, Mr. Koon Tang, and this is when the heavy storm comes, and Miss, Mrs. Sally Bestian have standing water in, in the rear of their properties after a heavy storm, and both are located on Antonia Road or Antonia Drive. That's one point. On the 10-year storm and the 100-year storms, we, we believe that there will be runoff, that the bioretention basin will not be able to handle the overflow, and some water is going to come towards the Harson property, and then onto Vincenzo, and then because of the pretty steep slope from Vincenzo down to Row, the water's going to continue to flow, again, this is stormwater. Koon had suggested that maybe one way to solve the problem would be to put an underdrain from the basin to, and hook it into the storm sewer on Vincenzo. The other comments, there's two other comments, we believe that homes three and four will, we think that the statement was made that they're not going to do any harm, and we don't agree with that, and that's because we don't think all the water is going to be vectored properly, and also, there's no, there's no data or tables to back up the comment that homes three and four will do no harm with respect to either Antonia or Row Road, the homes on that. So that's, that, that was the, and the last comment was just that, if, if this project, these projects did get, do get approved, we're going to be concerned about the construction activities with respect to things like the silt barriers are maintained, and some, some semblance of order when it comes to the, to traffic and noise, et cetera, and that's really, there are more detailed comments that Laura has from me, and also Mr. Koon Tang of Antonia Road or Antonia Drive, and that's really what I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. McFadden, and Laura, if you have copies of those, we'll make sure that we get those out to planning board members, and of course, the applicant, and in fact, next under discussion items is 2520, so we'll also be talking about them. Anything else from privilege of the floor? I think, I think that does it for that, right, Laura? Okay, so that brings us to 2520 Vincenzo Drive, four lot subdivision by Mr. Lisi and Ms. DeRoster.
Just, I'm going to recuse myself in this discussion.
All right, Mr. DeRoster has recused himself, and Ms. Gold will be sitting in for this portion of this discussion, taking his seat, okay? All right, so four lot, and I guess I'll start by turning it over to Mr. Diopino.
Okay, thank you. So we had some time to go through the Steenbrock report, which was pretty comprehensive, and then I saw that today there was a secondary follow-up from the TDE of Weston and Sampson that reviewed the current submission. So I think the best part to start is maybe work our way backwards, and start with the TDE's report. So, quite a bit of the information that was in there was reviewed, and I think that a lot of the info on the analysis was good, but it still seems like it's in a preliminary stage, as far as what additional information and drawings need to be provided. They did address in here about lot number one, and Laura, I believe that lot number one does not need to be factored in because of this application, is that correct?
Uh, I'm pulling up the map, sorry, I have the TD comments up and not the map. Lot number one is the...
The existing house.
The existing house.
But I believe part of lot number one, where the top of the driveway is shared, will actually be factored into, into this drainage plan, correct? Because it interfaces with the actual red line of the street.
That is correct.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I meant to introduce you guys, we have Mr. Steenbrock, the engineer of the applicant, and the applicant, Mr. Lisi, online with us, so they can jump right in and answer some questions also under this discussion, okay?
Okay. So, I think we're understanding that part of, part of lot number one will be utilized in, in the drainage analysis.
It, it is a very small part of lot number one, just where those driveways join down below, it really, just from a, when you're looking at something that small of an area, we're just trying to pitch the stormwater to one location or the other, away from running down onto Vincenzo Drive, and that's the only reason that small portion was included in the drainage study.
And then the, the map that was included in the package, which actually shows the bioretention basin location, was pretty clear, it backs onto the Harberson property facing Row Road. And Brett, I believe that part of the additional drainage design was also going to include along the edge of the driveway, a stone well that would catch, that would catch some of the, that would catch some of the runoff on what would be the, it would be the north side, is that correct? Similar to what you did on lot number one?
Actually, I didn't, I didn't do lot number one, and I kind of changed gears a little bit from what the engineer did on lot number one. Do you mind if I present, Laura, and put the plan up?
No, you can, I have it up on my screen as well, go ahead, if it doesn't work on yours, we can bring it up on mine. Okay, we have it, yep, we can see it, Brett.
Okay, so, you see my cursor on it, because I can't see it on my screen, so the way we ended up going with the design, and, and the first, when, when we, given all of the concerns of the neighbors along Vincenzo, obviously, this area was of prime concern for everyone, and tried to minimize the amount of runoff to that, that location. So what we did is, I took a hard look at the grades, and how we could try to keep any water from, from getting out onto Vincenzo. So, what we're doing is pitching a portion, it's, it's actually a very small portion of drainage going in that direction, it basically is this area here, this driveway, and the front lawn area, which has all been pitched, and you can see the spot elevations and grades, down into a swell located pretty much right where the driveways join, which will bring it into this bioretention basin. The reason I chose the bioretention basin over the stone storage, is stone storage, once the water gets in there, it's got to get out of there somehow, and it's either going into the ground, or it's got to be underdrained out of the soil. I like the bioretention because you get some, some good-sized trees in there, and they're going to, you know, utilize the water through evapotranspiration, you also get a tremendous amount of storage in the wetland planting soil, which is, or the, the bioretention planting soil, which is located in those basins, which is a, a manufactured soil with sand and organics in it to, to best provide the hydraulics, hydrology for the, for the vegetation in there. And what we found was, I mean, like I said, the drainage area is so small, because what we're going to do, and this is what I committed to before, is to try to get as much of the house to drain to the rear of the site as possible, because as you're aware, after walking the site, everything on the rear of the site basically pitches in this direction, and won't have any effect, but what we've done is created a large bowl area here in the back that'll basically just pick up the roof runoff, a little bit of driveway runoff, and the swell that's going to wrap around the house, so that we're trying to minimize not only the peak rates of runoff to Vincenzo, but the, the volume of runoff. I wanted to try to get the volume of runoff less than what, what is going there now for all the analyzed storm events, which we did for the two, the 10, and the 100-year storm event, and we're able to get the, the peak runoff rate, in some cases, 100% less than what is going towards Vincenzo now. And I know there was concerns about lot one, I've been out there, I've looked at lot one during storm conditions, it was actually after a, I think we had a pretty good snowpack, and then we got about an inch and a half of rain one day, and I was taking a look to see, you know, if we were getting a lot of runoff off of lot one, and there was minimal runoff coming out into Vincenzo Drive, and most of it actually was coming out of this rear yard right here, which I know wasn't from lot one, because there's a, there's a high point of berm in here, was coming out and into the catch basin there, and when I say a minimal amount of runoff, it was a trickle of runoff into the catch basin during a, a pretty, what I typically consider one of the worst-case scenarios, because you have frozen ground, snowpack, snowmelt, and rain on top of that. So what, what we've had is, I really focused a lot on trying to maintain good drainage around, you know, lot two, as, as we always talked about, we always talked about the fact that, that this is the side that you needed the drainage analysis on. I do have some concerns regarding, and I think there was a comment in the back, does this storm, or does this basin, can it handle a two-inch rainfall in one hour, and I did a quick analysis on that today, and it's got more than, I think the two-inch rainfall is, for one hour for the drainage area is like 854 cubic feet, we have more than 1,300 cubic feet in, in this basin alone, before it even starts to, before it even gets six inches deep. So, we, we really have more than enough storage, it's actually somewhat overdesigned, but we wanted to do that because of the, the concerns in that area, plus we think the bioretention basin in that area makes a much nicer landscape feature, because it actually ends up creating a landscape buffer between lot two and the existing residence here. When we, the, the one thing I, I want to talk about, a little bit about Weston Sampson's comments, and I, I didn't have a lot of time this afternoon to look through them, I got them late in the afternoon, I did notice one comment, and I know Laura probably saw some emails that I sent out for clarification from Joe Zongal, he is, he made the statement that because we are disturbing 2.5 acres, but have a 28% impervious area, that it requires a full stormwater management plan under DEC's regulations, and the numbers that he was using aren't really the case, because really what it is, is we're disturbing 2.5 acres, we have .7 acres of impervious area on a 17-acre parcel, that's how DEC reviews that, and I did get confirmation from DEC today, so we're like at 400 and a half percent of impervious area, so the, the project does not require full SWIP, both for DEC's regulations, nor does it require for the Town of Niskiun Sediment Control Law. What it requires is a basic SWIP, because it's residential development under five acres with less than 25% of impervious area. I mean, we could, if he, he wanted to stick with those numbers, you could always clear more area, and have three acres of disturbance, and then you would have 25% of that three acres would be impervious, but that's not the way the calculation works, based on my discussion with DEC this afternoon. So, a lot of his comments were pushing us towards analyzing both lots three and four for full, not only erosion sediment control, which is what's required by law, both local law and state law, but he wanted us to look at it from a, the full SWIP standpoint, which is water quantity quality, as it would be required, as I, I essentially did on lot two, because of the sensitivity there, but we were never going to look at that for lots three and four, because he's got, you know, nine acres of open space, everything pitches to, I know a few of you have walked the site, basically, you have a high ridge right in here, and everything on this side of the ridge pitches this way, including the rear lots on Antonia, pitch this way through the site, ultimately to a drainage channel located on the far side of the site here. I mean, you can see that we even created a swell here to divert some of the water that would be coming off the rear of the lots of Antonia towards our property that it, as it, as it does now. And the, the reason, you know, when you look at the amount of impervious area and the amount of, you know, construction that's involved, the runoff rates are minimal when you start looking at spreading it out over nine acres of land, and that's why DEC, nor does the town require a full, a full stormwater plan on that, and that's something we will be working out with Weston Sampson. The other thing I wanted to know is, going through Weston Sampson's comments, you know, my, my initial thought, and I know, I know Lou's initial thought was, we were hiring the TDE to review, because this is a minor application, a minor subdivision application, he was hiring the TDE to review the stormwater management, and, you know, plans that you see before you, and I know, because I've done a few minor subdivision applications, are pretty consistent with what a minor subdivision application requires, and you know, when you start looking at major subdivision applications with roads, drainage structures, sewer, water, you start looking at more detailed numbers, and more detailed plans, but I, I, I mean, you know, I, it's something, you know, will work out with Weston Sampson, but I just wanted to make note of that at the meeting tonight.
Okay. So, Brett, one of the things I do want you to do is, I know that because the SWIPs statewide has been updated recently, just follow up with Weston and Sampson and the DEC and writing for the town, so that we have a summary of that, so that you can address, yeah, just address items 23 and 24 under the SWIPs.
Yeah, I did, and I'll, I did send an email from Mary Berry at DEC, who's one of the regional SWIP coordinators, used to be Schenectady County, now she's doing Albany County, but I, I happen to know she would get back to me quickly, and I will follow up with that on, on, just to confirm that that isn't required.
I'd probably copy our Schenectady County rap on that, too, just to make sure that everybody, you know, is on the same page.
Yeah.
Jamie now.
Oh, Jamie, yeah, I figured, I actually, Mary suggested I contact Jamie, and I just didn't get around to contacting Jamie today, but I did go through the 20 code, and it's, if you're looking, it's in Appendix B Table 2, which talks about this, and it hasn't changed from the previous versions on how that is handled for five-acre residential parcels, it's, and it's always been the cumulative area. It's, and it's always been the cumulative area of the project, not the disturbed area.
Okay. And then, I mean, David, you can jump in here, but you know, town code is also looking at upstream and downstream impacts. So we're, you know, we're looking at the DEC code and then we're also making sure that we're meeting our own local code requirements as well. Um, and David, I just wanted to show, um, a picture really quick, Brett, if you don't mind, can I just show?
Absolutely, go ahead.
This may be what you're talking about, but I did receive a picture from a resident. Um, and I don't know if I can like, it's a light takeover. I'm going to see if I can kick you off. And then you can go right back on.
No, no, I, I'm fine.
And I mean, maybe this is what you're talking about, but this is what they sent me for what the runoff looks like during a rainstorm. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Oops.
And I would say that's pretty typical of what you would expect from a heavy rain. Most of the water you see, you probably can't see me looking at it, uh, but most of the water from the catch basin, um, is a result of what's coming down Row Road. Um, you see very little water coming from the terminus of the, uh, driveway there.
And the, and you know, this is the new driveway. This has been post up like Row Road, like maybe this is like the catch basin almost to the corner of Row Road, but you can't really see Row Road on this picture.
Right. And what you, what you can see, I mean, looking at this, this kind of tells actually a, a pretty good story. Um, most of the water you can see, uh, and you can see how heavy this rain is because that catch basin on Row Road, um, there's quite a bit of water, uh, ponded and pooled that has been coming down Row Road. That is not from Vincenzo. You can see a very small, um, drainage line, uh, and it really doesn't even.
So like all of, we're talking like all of this is coming from that parcel, right?
That's, that's not a lot of water. That's, that really, I mean, you could, you can go out and look at that. That water would be along the edge and in the gutters Laura, because of the crown of the road. That's just a very shallow sheet of, of heavy rain that's coming down. That's rain that's hitting the road right there coming down. The area you'd want to focus on is right off of the end of the driveway there. Um, and you're not seeing a, a flow line, what you would typically see in the way that driveway is pitched. If you're looking at this picture, that driveway is pitched from right to left. So if you move your cursor to the left, uh, to the left side, yeah, right there. If there was a lot of water coming off, you would see a heavy flow line right coming down your cursor in front of their driveway. And you really don't even see the, the flow line picking up until after the driveway.
Well, this is the stone trench here, I think, right?
That's the stone trench there and it's working.
This water that's coming off of here like would potentially become less.
That's actually going to become significantly less. Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the volumes that we're talking about reducing because what you have is that hillside right there that was the original hillside is pitching all the stormwater. And that's actually really poor soils. It's pitching all the soil onto the end of Vincenzo. And with the, the regrading, we're going to try to pitch as much of that to the back as possible. And then we're also going to be pitching it over towards that bio retention basin, right about where he's just behind where the hydrant and the, um, utility boxes are there. That's going to be cut down and pitched over towards that detention basin, that, uh, bio retention basin. And, um, will provide for, um, you know, minimizing that, uh.
If you go back, if you go back to that picture Laura, if you can bring it back.
Oops. Yeah, oops, sorry.
Pretty good on that because the, the hill to the right behind the fire hydrant, that's leftover fill from the construction of the home that we couldn't remove offsite. That hill's being, that whole hill's coming down, right Brett?
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah, that whole hill that's draining water, that hill's going to be lowered by at least six weeks. But that was over from the construction.
Hey Laura, while you have the picture up, this is Chris, can you point out where the snow storage or pileup would be intended?
Straight ahead, you'll see stones at the end of that driveway. Nope.
This is the snow storage here, right? This little.
Yeah, Chris on that map that she just had up.
That's so.
So if you get a driveway, uh, where you see that gravel on the right hand side of the driveway there. Correct. Would be the snow storage area. And that's being designed to pitch towards the bio retention basin with the grades.
Up and then actually flow toward the bio retention.
Correct.
Correct. That's correct.
And then while.
Across the driveway and over into here. This snow surge here will sheet across the driveway and over into here.
That's where it's going.
Yes, actually, yeah. You can see with the grades, how the grades are pitching in that direction.
You might just want to, I don't know, um, because that would make your driveway ice up in the winter. Right?
See where those white posts are in the back, those two.
Yeah.
That's where it's going, way back there.
Okay.
It would be ideal for whoever lives in the house.
Mounds coming down. That's just left over from the construction that we built.
But it's interesting because like, just. Just to clean.
Those driveways, either side of Vincenzo are, are draining onto Row Road as, onto Vincenzo as well.
No, I know, but are we actually talking about our town? Because our town plows that stub. So we actually talking about our town pushing this, the snow from that stub that far up into the private properties?
I had told Ray he can push it as far as he wants.
Oops, sorry about that.
Did that this past winter.
Okay.
And that's why I put more stone there to allow for a driver to make that area larger for Ray to push snow. Trying to make his job a little easier.
Okay, how about, uh, comments from, from the privilege of the floor for Mr. McFadden? Um, um, I don't know Brett, uh, or Mr. Lucy, did, uh, if you wrote any of those down or you have anything to add to?
Yeah.
I think they're answered by Brett.
Yeah, I, I heard the, I heard the comments. Um, again, uh, I'm not sure, you know, I, I think we've adequately addressed the Vincenzo side from a stormwater management standpoint. Um, I, I think, I think at the end of the day, I think we're going to end up with a very, very good product there. Uh, he started, his comments started to talk about lots three and four and water ponding in the, in the rear yards of Antonia. I have no idea what he's talking about because I haven't seen any of that. Um, but when you start looking, um, looking at lots three and four, there is all of that water and you can see from the grades and I'm sure, uh, Joe Zongal will, will agree. Um, we're not pitching any of that water back out onto Antonia. Um, we, it is indeed, uh, moving towards the existing drainage course and likely will never see the existing drainage course due to the, uh, due to the, um, the quantity of distance in a wooded setting and what it'll need to travel. Um, additionally, the soils on that side of the site are a little better, um, than what you have. The, the soils out by Vincenzo are very poor soils where they did the test pits. Um, our soil maps are actually showing, um, are, are actually showing, um, colony sands, uh, on the high knob between the two lots and then mulled in, uh, silty sands, um, as you move over, uh, towards lots three and four. So you're going to get some, um, infiltration into the soils. There really isn't going to be, um, any issue. And again, it, it's, and I, I can, I can assure you that it, that this design, um, and this proposal meets all of the, uh, requirements of the, uh, the 2020 DEC general permit for erosion sediment control as well as the town's erosion sediment control law. I did go through those again today.
Right. And all I can say is that, uh, again, we'll make sure that we get, uh, Mr. McFadden's comments out to everybody. And during the design process or, uh, well, comments from Weston Sampson, let's just try to keep those in mind. Okay?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep. And there was also the, uh, the concern about, you know, 10 year and 100 years, uh, the runoff and the bio retention being able to handle that. Uh, did you have any things to add about that?
Yeah, I mean, that's all in the calculations. The, the bio retention basin has more than adequate, uh, capability. Cause what, well, interestingly, that bio retention basin is created quite low. We're digging a pretty deep hole in order to get that in the ground. Um, so you've got a few feet of free board there and even looking at the, um, 100 year storm event, we're not, uh, we're not pushing runoff, uh, much runoff, uh, out into, um, out into. And I can get, I can give you the exact numbers here. I did, uh, pull them up on my screen. Um, you're looking at, yeah. It between eighty, uh, an 84% reduction, um, for the 100 year storm for a runoff rate and a 48% reduction, not for a rate, but for a volume of runoff, um, for the, uh, 100 year storm, including the existing and proposed conditions. And, you know, my goal was to try to cut that, those volumes down because of the volume issues we have downstream. And, and successfully that was the, with the bio retention basin and some creative grading around the house.
Can I ask a question? Can you put the map back up of all the, all four lots?
Do you want me to put it up Laura?
Yeah, mine is so cumbersome because I don't have, I don't have a double computer.
One second, I'll, uh, I think I can put it up.
I started to do it and then it was not. It was not.
All right, Brett, I, I see your screen. Yep.
Yep.
And out a little bit. So just a couple of questions. First on a lot two Brett, can you just confirm, did that house location move slightly since earlier designs?
Uh, yes, it had. We tried to align the house a little bit better with the house on lot one.
Yeah, a little further away from Row, creating more room for the, the detention basin.
That's correct. And got it a little further back so that we could pitch the roof runoff towards the rear of the site.
Excellent. Excellent. It looked as though that was the case. And then with regards to the basin itself, uh, were there any more trees that needed to be or will be, uh, considered at risk based on that basin's size and how depth, the depth you mentioned? Um, and will it impact on the, the barrier that will be between the house on Row and, uh, the new lot two?
We're leaving, um, um, let me, uh, give me one second here and I can, I can. Exactly, exactly. We're leaving a 22 foot area clearing area. Um, and the factory line in my, I don't know, I don't know.
Chris, the feedback I think is coming from the sound. Can you mute? You mute?
Me?
No, Chris, when Brett's speaking, yeah. Go ahead Brett.
Okay, so we got a 22 foot, um, uh, uh, tree buffer there, plus the bio retention basin will be planted with some, uh, red maples and cypress trees to help absorb some of that water, um, which actually I, I really love planting those cypress trees in those because you don't see those around a lot here, but, uh, you think of them only in Florida, but they do grow very well here. If you go over to, uh, um, the bio retention basins we did over at Yercoy Village, they all have, uh, some pretty healthy cypress trees growing in them, um, right now that have been able to maintain, uh, good, good growth and they, they do, they do have a great water uptake. Um, and that's why, that's why we planted them. So you're going to get some additional plantings in there as well, full tree plantings.
So it'd be, it'd be 22 feet of buffer between the two lands and, and the setback?
Yes. And that's, and that's fully wooded, Chris, right now. That 22 feet is all woods. All woods.
Yeah, I was going to say that hasn't changed. Actually, here's a question about tree work. Has, has there been a lot of tree work done on these lots so far? Any recent tree work?
Yeah, today we took a tree down in my daughter's backyard because I was about to fall over.
Oh, but that's on the existing lot?
Yes, yes.
I was referring to the other lots. Is there?
No, we haven't, we have not, we haven't touched the tree on the site beyond what we built, what we did when we built her home.
And do you see any challenges with keeping with, um, the letter from Whitney, uh, with regards to the, I forgot how they define the tree, but six inches or, or more, um, any insights on the success of really interrupting a lot of the mature trees that are greater than six inches in diameter?
We do want to have backyards that we, that are functional. So I, I, I can't restrict the backyard where we may put swing sets of playgrounds for my grandkids to be there. Um, there's also going to be some type of walking trail that goes back from my house to their house, uh, which those I'm not going to take any trees down, but I can't, I don't know what my kids are going to do in their backyards right now. Do we want to take, we want to keep the, the, the woods as much as possible? That's the purpose of this. Is to keep as much wood as, woods as possible.
Got it. Okay.
And just, uh.
Good. Those are the questions I had.
Well, you also said, Chris, just, uh, refresh my memory on, uh, lot number four. There's only part of it that's going to be deed restricted. Could you just remind me, um, where we?
This area right here will be deed restricted on lot four.
Correct.
Right. And I just remember, uh, I remember we had a discussion on why that area not more. I think it was to allow flexibility, uh, in the future. Is that why it was?
That's correct. If, if we wanted to retain, i- if somebody purchased this house in 30 years and decided they wanted to demolish Lou's house, and I'm sure he's going to spend a lot of money on and, and run a road through here and eventually, you know, connect it through and try to do that and subdivide lots off. So we wanted to have the ability to still retain a lot in this area. So that's why we, um, we deed restricted, um, you know, the, the lots one, two in this area of, um, lot, uh, and lots three in this portion of lot four.
Correct. Yeah, I just couldn't remember. I know we had the discussion for, thank you for refreshing my memory.
Correct.
Yeah, man, I think you can just scroll up. It's the first page of your drawing. But, um, I did want to clarify, deed restriction is not the same as, um, tree clearing limits. So, I mean, these lots are allowed to, to take down individual trees, just as the same as any residential property in the town of Niskiuna. If there's a tree that's, that they don't like or that's falling, they have the right to take down a single tree. They can't clear more than 10,000 square feet without a building permit. But the limits of clearing up for the subdivision, once they become single family homes, there's the deed restriction. I mean, they're under the same rules that all single family homes are under in the town of Niskiuna.
Thanks Laura. Uh, David, uh, what else you got for us and anything you think of? Mr. D R Pino?
Um, yeah, the only, the only other comments in the TDE's letter were the locations of the roof drains. I think Brett, you just touched on that a little bit. They're recommending.
The, we actually, the, the roof drains and, and I'm going to, um, respectfully disagree with, uh, Mr. Zongal's comment on rerouting the roof drains to the bio retention basin. Um, and the reason being is we have a lot of land behind the house on lot two. And, and again, a lower area, and that's that transition where we get into the better soils. I would rather run the roof leaders into this lower area that we're creating behind the, 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 the house here and allow it to, um, be absorbed by the trees, be absorbed by the woodland and, um, in, into the ground. Then put more drainage out into, um, Vincenzo Drive. And that's one of the ways we were able to achieve the, the reduction in overall runoff volumes to Vincenzo Drive was through some creative grading around the house and adjusting the roof leaders to go to the rear of the house and away from, from that area, which we've known all along has been an area of increased sensitivity. And, and Lou is committed to making sure that we don't, um, the exacerbate an existing problem.
Okay. I believe that's what they also did on lot number one. Lou, the drains head out towards the south end of lot number two, correct?
That is correct. Right. We, we put a swale behind house number one, which drains from, uh, towards the back of, as it's going towards the Antonio, uh, property.
Okay.
Which goes towards lot, uh, three and four. And I think you walked that, you saw that swell that we built stays away from the, the houses on Row Road.
Okay. So Brett, if you could, if you could, um, when you're, when you're going through all of these comments in here, if you could explain that a little bit more detail and the rationale behind it, I think that that's helpful. Also, I think it would also be good to show the two drain basins that come down the stubs of Vincenzo.
All the catch basins, yes.
Show, show, show the catch basins there. They're good for reference and, uh, everybody knows that they're going to be part of the overall snapshot that we're looking at here. So, I mean, you, you can pull them up on your, on your satellite maps. It would be beneficial to have them just on the Vincenzo stuff.
Absolutely.
Um, David, just to follow up on the. Um, David, just to follow up on the roof drains, though, I know Patrick had brought this up at a different meeting, Brett, maybe you can just make sure is that you're not making, we're really concerned about Ralph Road and rightfully so. And, you know, appreciate all the effort you're putting into figuring out the drainage there, but we don't want to make actually any more water go onto the, um, uh, I think it's Polsonelli. No, what's the name of the parcel that's to the north?
The Polsonelli parcel?
Okay, Polsonelli parcel. So you just want to make sure that you're not actually discharging to the Polsonelli parcel either.
Yeah, and and that was all included within the drainage analysis. We did analyze those, those drainage areas going to that low area.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure it stayed away from both as well, Laura. So that's why we push it towards the middle.
You can see we're pushing it down. We're, we're, we've got a drainage swell around to push it down into this low area here rather than allowing it to go to the north.
All right. So the, you know, the comments were pretty new. We just received those this afternoon. So thank you, uh, Mr. Steenberge for getting at least a quick look at those. Um, as usual, along with what David had had, you'll, uh, respond to those comments. And usually we go back and forth to make sure we, uh, um, you know, we settle on them, you know, obviously as we go forward. Uh, that's, you know, you know, and it's detailed engineering, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And and the thing that, and and I'll talk, you know, I'll ask Dave for his recommendation, but where, where we're at is, uh, you know, we gotta have a public hearing and we gotta do, um, secret determination on this project. Usually we don't wait for all the engineering to be done. And there's some good, uh, values to not doing that because something comes up from the public. You can also have the opportunity to, uh, to analyze that or incorporate that in the engineering. So, um, um, we, uh, we're going to need a resolution sooner or later for, uh, calling for a public hearing. Um, that's something, David, you think we should be able to have on for the May 11th meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as long as Lou and his team thinks that they can gather up the information to respond to what they need to before that date.
Absolutely. I have no issues with that. Um, I would like to get it sooner than later because, uh, a- as you said, um, the, you, you know, you want to get any comments from the public before everything's finalized. Um, you know, some of the comments that were made tonight were brand comments, um, with regard to Antonia. And, um, and and some of the drainage on lots three and four. And certainly we don't want that just to get pushed aside because it wasn't made earlier. And I wouldn't like, um, you know, an opportunity to take a look at that and finalize, uh, anything that we can.
Right. All right. So that would just be, well, not just be, it's important that we have a resolution calling for the public hearing. That would be the May 11th meeting would be the resolution. So the actual public hearing wouldn't be held to, uh, let's see, uh, I'm not sure the date, Laura, uh, later in May.
It's, um.
25th? Somewhere in there. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me either, but somewhere in there. So later in.
It would actually be June 8th, Kevin.
What's that?
June 8th.
Just on Memorial Day weekend, it wouldn't be June 8th. So we'd hold the public hearing then, uh, Acton Seeker and, uh, and then, you know, hopefully we had at least a, uh, round back and forth with comments that that we can brief the public on at the public hearing where we stand because obviously drainage is very important, stormwater management.
So, Kevin, just a point of clarification, we actually do the secret determination when we're calling for a public hearing. So we would have the secret determining been written into the, um, resolution calling for a public hearing. A lot of times we just do a show of hands, but for subdivision, we have to do the secret determination prior to the public hearing. So I guess, um, my only thought would be if anybody's read through the CAC and has any concerns, um, the staff would traditionally prepare the seeker, uh, the seeker determination based on the CAC recommendation. So you probably just want to take a look at that.
Yeah.
They were granted a negative declaration.
Yeah. Was that final, Laura? I don't have it in front of me, but, uh.
Yeah, they did. They did take a vote on it. They felt, you know, and they have some, um, conditions in there. But they felt like the size of it and the lack of density based on what could be there um, was really important. And let me see if I can pull it up for you really quickly. Sorry, just take a second.
I see there's a value of killing a tree. Usually have all that paperwork in front of me, but to have to go. But yeah, you're right, Laura. I recall, you know, that again, the intensity, uh, what could be here. I know that's, uh, it doesn't provide a lot of comfort for the, for the neighborhood, but it is important. I mean, there's, there's four homes there and substantial amount of acreage.
Okay, so here, just, um, they thought the deed restrictions are very important and we went through those early on, I think, based on the CAC recommendations and you guys' own concern for further subdivision. Um, they thought the forest buffer to neighbors was very important, just um, because of the unique configuration of the lots and them being in people's backyards. Um, just in terms of generally speaking, uh, adverse change to natural resources that they wanted to retain as much forest as possible. I feel like you guys have been following up on that as well. And, um, the proposed action may result in a small increase in the potential for flooding or drainage problems. So we know the drainage problems exist. Um, and so they deferred to you to mitigate the drainage, which currently you've been working on. So their recommendation was a negative declaration with deed restrictions, ensure cumulative impacts of each sub-division is taken into account. Um, understand the existing drainage issues and make sure that they're addressed to the satisfaction of the planning board and town engineering department. Um, the frontage on lot one, which I think we talked about before, uh, being addressed to the satisfaction of the planning board so that you don't have to go to the zoning board. And then, yeah, just leaving as much trees and natural buffer to the residential homes. I can share the things in the screen if you guys want to read it.
No, I, I recall, um, so, and so, so it sounds like we're there as far as a recommendation and, and, you know, I concur with the negative declaration. So as long as David's good, we'll have that in the resolution according for the public hearing, uh, on May 11th then. Does anybody have any concerns or, uh, input or, uh, a different viewpoint on that from the board members?
Uh, no different viewpoint. I just had a small question for Laura, um, or anyone else, uh, who, who might recall a discussion we had a few months ago about the, um, the northwest boundary three, um, off the stub road of St. Gerard. Uh, I think we, we had a little back and forth trying to determine our best to locate that property boundary um, in expectation that there could be further subdivision to lot four.
Yeah, so I'm glad you're bringing that up, Patrick. It's actually exactly the same thing I wanted to talk about a little bit. So both, both points that you raised, where we ended up with that St. Gerard road, because I know we discussed it. And I guess I'm asking a questionnaire for whoever wants to answer, whether it's this Lou or Brett or or Laura. Large remaining part of lot four, something that's subdivided in the future?
There is a stream and the stream is required to have a 50-foot buffer on either side of it for protection. And there are some federal wetlands, which, you know, require either a pretty significant permit or a small amount of disturbance and then a 20-foot, 25-foot buffer from the town of Niskiuna. Um, but there is potential to, to fit. It's not a lot. I mean, but there's potential to fit other lots in there.
That is correct. I would agree with that.
So does any, does any, so, so Patrick, I didn't mean to lop on to the comments you started, but like I said, you, I think we were thinking about the same thing. So we, we could talk first about St. Gerard. So this is the final configuration of St. Gerard. Right? I think, Brett, you had made a change from what was originally there after we had that discussion. And so St. Gerard could potentially serve as an access road now to any future subdevelopment on that property, right?
Can you scroll down, Brett? Yeah, there.
Right here, coming up, um. St. Gerard, in order to do that, would have to deed a portion of lot three for a new right-of-way and a portion of lot four to actually get a road to access into the site. It would actually require agreement between the two, uh, property owners in order to do so.
Okay.
I think originally you have, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you originally had the parcel line for a lot um, for the lower lot, go all the way to the, um, to the west side of St. Gerard. And I think you scooched it into the middle, right?
It's in the middle. No, it was always in the middle. Um, what we did is we, we changed this area right here to, um, not be deed restricted. Now go back to the deed restriction map real quickly. Um, so that if in the future, when all of us are long gone, which is what I anticipate, um, somebody decided they did want to run a road in here. Um, this person could sell this portion of the property off and it's not deed restricted. So that the person on lot four could eventually develop the remaining portion of the lands. But there's no plans for that at all. We were just trying to, uh, plan for the potential for future development, which is something we do, uh, whenever we do a project.
No, that address that concern that I had, I, I do remember that. So, um, that's all I had.
So just to continue the point, uh, uh, in anticipation of some future subdevelopment there, Laura, is there something that we need to do with the drainage calculations now or?
Oh, for lots three and four? I mean, do so much. I mean, I think looking at them really carefully is really important, considering upstream and downstream drainage, having Brett respond to the TDE comments. Being really clear about where that water's going and understanding how it's working is good for the record so that, um, when the future subdivision happens, it will take the cumulative effects into account. One of the things in our plat note was that we put, is that this one, Lou?
Yeah, we thought we resolved this issue, uh, three months ago. Yeah.
Future subdivision is going to be a major subdivision and it'll have to take the cumulative drainage into account.
Correct.
And since the conditions change and things change, that's, that's the right way to do it, right? I mean, uh, when I guess now and then later on, they shore ourselves in the foot. If something does happen, uh, it'll be scrutinized under the current conditions at that point in time.
That's correct.
Exactly. So the burden, the burden will be on that development if that ever were to happen.
It'll be cumulative and taken into account, this subdivision.
Okay. Hey, by the way, Lou, which, which lot's your house going to be on?
Lot four.
Lot four.
So guys, I was just looking at.
It'll be a pretty house, Genghis, I trust me.
So I, I'm just, hey, Lou, I'm just thinking about some of you might want more neighbors than just family.
With that?
Yeah. So someday, yeah, not everyone who lives in those houses would be related theoretically. So I'm just, I'm looking at lot four and just to continue on this St. Gerard drive. If someday there was ever a road to cut through, and we don't know that there will be. But you might actually want to consider if the road was going to go through, if you move the home on lot four back a little bit, you might actually just want to make sure that that lot would meet the setbacks to be subdivided off potentially. So like, that road could just build a driveway that would connect into the road and it would theoretically have 30 feet back from any future lot line there. Obviously, that's probably easier to put the foundation in the correct spot now than if there was ever a future road. I don't know. We don't have to because there's a potential that there never would be a future road, but it's something I want to consider.
That's a good idea. Just to let you know, I have no intention of putting that road in, so I didn't think about that. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, what I, what I'll probably do, Lou, is I'll, um, i- if the road were to go in, you may want to try to center it over that sewer main. So what I'll do is I'll assume that the center of the road, um, run a 30-foot right-of-way off of that and then the standard setback and just slide the house back a little further.
That's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's fine.
Good comment, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, thanks. I'm, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or concerns? Um, sounds like we've already agreed, um, on having the resolution, uh, going for the public hearing and executing seeker at the next meeting. Anything else from the applicant, Mr. Steenberg or Mr. Lisi?
Nope. I appreciate your time this evening and I think, um, you know, we're moving forward and, uh, uh, in the right direction here. And, you know, hopefully we can get everything worked out with Wes and Sampson in short time and, uh, be, uh, looking at the, so, pretty, uh, innocuous public hearing at the end.
Yep, and hopefully, uh, uh, by June 6th, I believe it was, uh, we back over at Town Hall, we can, uh, all look each other face to face, uh, at that point in time. Hopefully we'll get there. Okay?
So, Kevin.
Me too.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. We're, we're going to close this on discussion items and you're welcome to drop off or stick around.
Thank you to Stacy.
All right, thank you. All right. So that's it for 2520 Vincenzo Drive for tonight. And next up on discussion is 2538 River Road, the average density development specially used from it and major subdivision application, which is known as Kels Farm. Joel of Bysalon, is that how you say Joel? Joel, you there? Yeah, we don't hear you, Josie. Maybe you, you might be on mute. We have to check that.
I call.
I know he was on earlier. I saw him.
He was on earlier. We heard him. We checked the sound.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if I can, he might be on phone. There's lots of phone numbers I see, uh, but I don't know who they are. And the phone numbers are all on mute right now. So maybe Joel, you might be on mute.
Yeah, there, there is that big J, which is probably him.
Yeah, so he can, so he's on his role, like, to be able to view us, but then he also called in on the phone and weird because I can't unmute him. Joel, if you try calling back in, because I don't know how you got.
Or maybe Joel, Joel, you might be able to hit star six seven to unmute yourself. Because I did something similar, right? That's why I'm not showing up with them.
Okay.
Yeah, Joel's listed now, just so he's muted, according to this.
Joel, if you can hear us, you want to try star six seven?
Okay, everybody just bear with us for a moment. Okay. And how about, um, the other person is Mr. Costa. Costa, is he available tonight? Did he join in?
I did not see him join. I don't think he's here.
I don't see it on the list there either. Uh, just Joel. But hopefully we can get his sound from Joel and we'll be okay here.
Let me just, Craig, you have his cell phone. I might be able to call him really quickly.
I'll see if I can take that out.
I've got it. I'm going to mute myself and see if I can get ahold of him. Do you guys want to?
Yep. While Laura's doing that, uh, uh, basically the project leads here again is, uh, Mr. Diarpino, Mr. McPartland, a joint venture here, which we appreciate. Um, I do know that we did have some preliminary information from the Conservation Advisory Council. Uh, but I believe they're going to take a hard look and give us some, um, determination at their May meeting. And once, uh, uh, Joel gets on, I'll turn it over to you, David, and, uh, Mr. McPartland, okay? Yeah, it seemed like we had everybody, uh, earlier and I was going to show you how things, uh, work out, but, uh, we're getting better.
So he can, he can, um, call my cell phone and I can put him on speaker. I actually did that at a different, um, teleconference and it worked really good. Hello. Um, hold that. That okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, for some reason I, I called on both my phones.
Okay, you're probably going to have to turn your sound off on your system.
Yeah.
And then just, yeah, and then just listen through my phone and talk through my phone, okay?
Sure.
Can you guys hear? Can you guys hear him?
Yeah, we can hear both of you Laura.
Yep. Sounds good. Okay, so Joel, welcome. And we're going to, I'll go turn over either David or Mr. McPartland, whoever's ready to go and I'll jump in, of course. You want me to?
I can, yeah, I can, I can talk about the, well, the first piece of information was the, the traffic study. And I think I shared some of the sentiments that a couple of the letters that came in regarding this type of assessment of getting information. And I had some of the same concerns and questions. You know, is everybody that's using a type of smartphone, do they have to have their mapping capabilities on or what type of tracking? Can those be shut off on certain types of smartphones that wouldn't give an accurate reading? I don't know if Joel, you know some of this information?
I think what they're going to do, David, is that they're going to take the smartphone data and compare it to 2015 D O P data also, compare it to empirical data pre-COVID as well as the, you know, latest data.
Okay, well, at least the past few weeks that I've been out driving, volume everywhere is low, from the throughway to everywhere. So I don't know if this traffic study, I mean, it'll be interesting information, but I don't know if it'll be reflective of what we would expect if we ever do go back to some sort of return to normalcy. Or what we might find is that there's going to be lower traffic volumes moving here.
Well, David, what the traffic study actually does is that on its cell phone usage is it picks up the origination of a trip and the destination. So what it'll do is for that whole area for the AM period and the PM period, it will pick up the origin of a drive and the destination. And most of the destinations will be the high school. And then what it'll do is based on the origin of the drive, it'll predict what new path the people will take, if they'll take the cut through. And then it'll give an estimate of the increase in traffic, you know, on the, on, on the cut through. You know, if, if we do join the road, but you got to understand that, you know, if somebody was driving down Chestnut or Menlo Park, you know, and they decide to take the cut through instead, the same volume will be on Windsor, you know, going up to the high school. So I think what the traffic study empirically is going to show or, you know, from a logical standpoint is that, you know, some people will take the cut through, some won't. So traffic will decrease on Chestnut slightly, decrease on Menlo Park slightly. And that, that change will be picked up by the cut through, but the traffic on Windsor will be the same. And the speed on Windsor won't be affected by this cut through.
So with these. Go ahead Leslie.
I believe the term is connection. Don't design cut throughs.
I couldn't, I couldn't understand that comment.
Well, I'll, I'll clarify, what Ms. Gold said is that we keep using the term cut through. It's a connection from the proposed development to Windsor, to make that connection river to Windsor. If it turns out that the analysis shows that people are utilizing it as a cut through, then it's a cut through. But right now, we're trying to analyze the connection and see how that would work out. Has a kind of a negative sound that you're assuming that it'll be used as a cut through versus, you know, you know, just redistributing traffic, which is what you just said, Joel, may end up with this, you could, again, we don't have the analysis, but you could end up with the same amount of traffic on Windsor. But just take it off of the other potential exits that take you out to river, either the, was it Menlo Park or what's, you know?
Edison. Briar Ridge, yeah.
Yeah, Briar Ridge, you know. But you know, we'll let the data show is that, you know, we're just assuming there, of course. Yeah, so.
I want to say, I think, I, I'm sorry, I think the only thing we could do at this point is take the measurements that we can take with whatever kind of study can be done. But as we make further determinations, we're just going to have to, you know, take into consideration number one that we're definitely not in a normal volume of traffic now. Number two, no one knows when and what new normal is. Right? And so we're in uncharted waters to some extent relative to the full interpretation of any study that we do right now, but I think we do need to take the measurement.
Yes. Joel, was there a traffic counting device out on River Road, I don't know, a week or two ago as part of this?
Yes, that's our, that's Creighton Manning put that counter on River Road, Kevin.
Yep, okay. Yeah, and then they would, and then you take that data and then utilize the supplemental data from GPS and then to try to make some correlation between current conditions and how it relates to the 2015. And then upscale those numbers because what the low volumes like Mr. Diarpino said.
That's correct, I mean, they're going to take, they're going to take the iPhone data, which was pre-COVID. They're going to use CDPA traffic studies, they're going to use the DOT and, you know, they have this, this big database, they're, they're going to compare all the databases. And then their programs predict the connection effect, the effect of the connection.
A question about the, that's being, the 2015 data that's being used in connection with Creighton Manning's study. Is it possible that there's some more data out there that might have been gathered in connection with the decision on the intersection of Rosendale and River Road that resulted in the the.
We'll be using that same data that they use for the River Road, Rosendale Road, turnabout and also for the knot street work that they're doing in front of the co-op. So it's all the same data. When we look at the data on Balltown Road, that's the same data that the county used. You know, for the, for the co-op work and also for the roundabout work. So we're using all that same, same data.
Well, my two cents is just, you know, one of the comments that David made. It's really unclear, in my opinion, when if ever we'll return to normal traffic volume on River Road. And to, to hold out for that possibility, I think seems an undue hardship on, on the developer. In, in light of a lot of the changes that employers are making and encouraging work from home arrangements, I, I'm, I'm imagining that we won't ever possibly see the same normalcy of traffic volumes on some of our major arteries, arterial roadways in town. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
We could predict that the pre-COVID would be less traffic. So that would be beneficial to the neighbors on Windsor.
Yeah, be, be more conservative.
Joel, a question, so this.
Before we get too far too, is I just wanted to throw it out there and I don't know where Laura got the idea, I forgot where she got the idea, but it's a tremendous idea. And that is, is that, you know, we put in the traffic calming feature, the S term on our subdivision. But, but again, once they hit that nice clear shot straightaway on Windsor, they speed back up. And Laura made, came up with the idea to make Windsor a boulevard, which is, you know, the fitting of the houses down that street, you know, to have a boulevard. And do we have any boulevard in this unit besides maybe Grand Boulevard, a portion of Grand Boulevard?
Um, Lexington's a boulevard, it was actually complete streets. And they were saying that if you put a median, a grass median with trees and then potentially even put trees on either side, you're narrowing the visual corridor, you're increasing property values and hopefully slowing cars down. But it is expensive.
I mean, I thought that was a tremendous idea because right now, I mean, it just looks like a big vast expanse when you're driving cutting up Windsor. So if you put a median in there and planted some trees in the towns right away, to make it kind of like a canopy, you know, that would really slow traffic because the way to slow traffic is to give the driver a constrained feeling when they're driving. You know, and a median and trees on the towns right away would be a tremendous approach. You know, like speed tables and speed bumps aren't really that effective, but a median, you know, would be a great idea. I wish I'd thought of that.
Yeah, go ahead Kevin.
Go ahead David. I was just going to ask Laura, it's a problem with this. Laura, the police also put out the, the speed and traffic counter. Do we have any preliminary data, just, I know it's, again, it's quiet, but how about the speed? Have you seen a lot of speeders on Windsor right now?
Um, they just put it out, I haven't gotten the preliminary data from them, but yes, it does collect data on speed and number of cars. So we should be able to get that soon.
Okay, sorry Dave.
And we're going to share that data too, the town has promised us the data from that counter.
So, so two things, one of which adding a median on Windsor, whether that, you know, you work through the county and in conjunction with the town. If you go through the comp plan, not just Grand Boulevard and Lexington, Doorwalt also has a median. And I live on Grand Boulevard, they become wonderful lineal parks if they're wide enough that you can walk on them and plant at least a row of trees. They are, are great aesthetic attributes to a neighborhood. Even in Schenectady on some of the areas off Eastern Parkway, they do have smaller medians in there. And each of the neighborhoods have adopted them as plantings, they're not just a couple lollipop trees here and there. They're actually landscaped pretty well. And again, that can be an asset and a feature too there. So if, if that could be pursued at some point or at least put into the next comprehensive plan as a, as a goal, that would be a great, a great thing to reference. And then Joel, just a question again about the traffic study. I, I find that data collection kind of interesting, I don't know, have, have you used that as a developer in conjunction with anything in the last two or three years? And Laura, maybe this is a question for you. Are any of the traffic studies that we're getting, whether it was at the Knot Street Corridor Project or the circle that they were adding? Is, is the data collection with phones and smartphones and destination points part of any traffic study that we've received?
Look David, this is all state of the art. If you look at like the traffic counters, the traditional traffic counters they put out. All they do is, it's a pressure switch and it counts the car going past and it says how fast it's going, that's it. Okay, well, the iPhone data, it tells where a person started their trip and where they ended their trip. So it could tell if a person starts on Chestnut or if they start on Briar Ridge or, or it was my wife driving my kids to school from Berkeley Avenue, you know, down Foxwoods or Hollow or whatever to the high school and back and the speed actually too. So it can, it can do predictions, you know, on, on altering a path, you know, based on the shortest route. You know, and if we all have, I use Waze when I travel. And, you know, it's amazing when you look at Waze, how many people are on Waze at any given time, you know, in the data that they're collecting. So the data is mu- much more valuable than just a, a pressure switch counter sitting in the middle of the road, you know? I mean, even the town's counter now, you know, it, it's going to tell how many people are driving down Windsor and their speed, okay? It doesn't say where they started their trip, where they ended their trip, you know? Where they going to the high school, where they going to ShopRite, where they going to the post office? Where they going to First National Bank, where they going to Berkshire Bank, where they going to the co-op? You know, if, if, this data will know that and the data will say, you know, if the person originate, you know, not many people live on River Road, so they're not going to go straight up this connection now, you know? So it's a, it's a great predictive tool. You know, I think, I think what the traffic is studying again is going to show is that there will be minimal people that take this route during the AM and PM, you know, because not many people live, you know, and drive down River Road to get to the high school. You know, most of the, most of the houses are, are north of it, okay, or west of it rather, sorry. So I don't think many people will go through this connection in the AM and PM. It'll be the steady traffic that I would think from, you know, people going to maybe Capital and R and D, you know, from the neighborhoods.
And so David, I don't know if typical engineering firms use, use like, I call it Google's, Google data, Joel's calling it. I can't remember what he just called it. Yeah, so he's got an iPhone and I've got a Google. But I can reach out to CDTC and ask them if that's something that they typically like double check or incorporate in their traffic studies? Because they do a ton of them. And I know that actually Creighton Manning even reached out to CDTC in the beginning of this traffic study, so I can ask and find out for you.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great Laura.
David, from what I hear from Creighton Manning is that this is, this is kind of the state of the art, you know, now, you know, using this Google data, you know?
Well, CDTC will know that because they actually often conduct origin destination studies for like their linkage programs and stuff. So let me just reach out to them and see what kind of data they typically look at and use for those because origin destination studies are really valuable and I don't know where you would get that data besides something like this, so I'll ask.
It's a technique that's been under development for several years.
Sorry, what Leslie?
It's a technique that's been under development for several years because I read about studies a few years back.
Yeah.
Well, obviously.
And there were privacy concerns.
I'm sorry, one thing, obviously it's very important, this is, you know, this is really key, not only for, you know, ourselves, for the residents and then also, you know, in supporting our recommendation to the town board and having good data that the town board can make their decision on also. As far as TDE Laura, have we gotten to the point where we've selected a TDE for this project?
No, we need to do that. So I need to take the scope of the traffic study and the, you know, the preliminary drawings and send them over a TDE, get a quote for review and then get some escrow from Joel, but that definitely needs to be next step.
Okay. Yeah, obviously it's important, you know, because the TDE here, this might be, might be important on the selection of the TDE who may have more experience with
Traffic.
Traffic or their staffing that might have some experience on their staff in order to give a fair shake for everybody, you know?
Okay, fair one.
That's, that's a good idea.
The, yeah, yeah, because last thing you want is, you know, a lot of doubt or angst over, you know, how good it is. But I, it does sound good though, Joel, you make a good point there with the destination, starting and ending point. Now that's big. I know from just, you know, from where I live here, right off of River Road and being an employee, I used to work at the R and D Center and at Knowles Atomic is that a lot of people, you know, that live, don't live in town, most likely would not take that route. It would mostly be our neighbors that work at those facilities that would most likely take those route. And I think you would kind of said that earlier. Because, you know, if you're coming from, going to the R and D Center, you're on Van Antwerp, obviously you're not going to go down and around, you're going to come out below the R and D Center. If you're going to Knowles Atomic, you can come out that location, you got to cross two lines of traffic in order to go, make a left to go to Knowles. It doesn't seem productive, in fact dangerous. So I would think they would come down River Road also, but we'll let the data decide that, right?
Yeah, I think the, the traffic study will show that there's a small increase in traffic on Windsor. But again, whatever we do with the connection does not affect the speed on Windsor. And I think that's the major concern. Volume of traffic is a concern on Windsor, but the speed is the major concern. And, and the canopy of trees, you know, with the median is a phenomenal idea. As long as I don't have to pay for it, you know?
Even striping it would have a calming effect. Even striping it would have a calming effect.
Yeah, my mind's gonna be funny.
Oh, she felt even, even if you striped the road, it would still have a calming effect. Obviously that is more cost, um, it's less of a cost to do the striping. If you can do the full median. It's, it's just a nice like sort of, I think, compliment to the neighborhood and you know, helps protect property values, but there's a lot of different treatments you can do.
To me, the striping will make it look like a highway.
It doesn't have to. You can do it carefully and you can do like raised asphalt and stuff like that, but obviously the tree is much more
So Laura, making, making Windsor into a boulevard, is that a discussion that starts with the county?
No, no. Huh? No, it's town. It's a town road. The county doesn't have to be involved unless they have some random money that they can give up for a local road.
Okay. Have, have you brought that idea up with any town board members?
Uh, no, that actually just came up in our complete streets meeting. So the complete streets was looking at the new configuration, which we just want to make sure that we touch on in the meeting too. And, um, they, they mentioned the speed and they were talking about ways to reduce speed on Windsor and it came up at the complete streets meeting. So very recent Friday morning was the talk. It's obviously expensive.
Yeah. Okay. Because I think, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Joel's comment and I think it does reflect the first set of public comments that we got on this, right? I think it's really the speed than the volume in terms of what residents saw as the, uh, as the issue.
And yeah. Yeah. And we talked about putting a weight limit too, so that, you know, you don't have 18 wheelers going down this road, which I think the town board would, you know, probably, I don't think there's a problem with putting a weight limit so that it's not truck traffic.
Right. So, so it seems that, so it seems that there is a town level, town board action that actually could be taken relative to a boulevard recommendation, right? That the town board can, can give some consideration to.
Yes. The, um, the scope of the median and the funding for it, I think are probably um, outside of this conversation. Um, but I think that it really is worth looking into as a, because like Joel is saying, like he actually doesn't have anything. This project doesn't have anything to do with the current configuration, the width, you know, of that road. You could ask
No, no, yeah, I agree. I agree a hundred percent. It's a separate, it's a separate thing, but I think it's something that the town board needs to be aware of. Especially since we're going to be taking Joel's application to them, right?
Yeah. And especially if we're looking at and we're hearing now about the issues and we're brainstorming, like what can we do to help with this problem that actually exists regardless of whether or not there's an average density development, it's an important discussion to have.
Right.
Hey Laura, is there sufficient, uh, to the dimensions of Windsor work so that a median can be accommodated without any condemnation of any of the homeowners along Windsor? Has anybody done a takeoff?
So Windsor right away is very large. I can it's, it was meant to be a collector road. It's wider than normal. I think maybe I can pull it up on a thing.
The sixty Laura.
It's only sixty?
Oh, no, a local connector is collector, like Windsor is eighty-four foot right away.
It's eighty-four.
And a local road is sixty foot. So Windsor is twenty-four foot wider than a, a normal town road.
And it has the bike path, which takes up some room, but I think that you could shift things around a little bit. Maybe make the grasp between, you know, one side of the boulevard and, um, the bike path a little bit smaller.
Pass is in the right of, I think the bike path is in the, uh, the, uh, not, it's not in the right of.
Oh, it has its own easement? I can pull this up.
Yeah, it's setback. I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The bike, I don't think the bike path, the bike path is not in the right of.
Yeah, Laura, so the you should have enough room, you know? Gray would probably have to come in and maybe white in the blacktop if you put in like, uh, like David was saying, a, uh, a pretty substantial, um, boulevard, you know, maybe like at least eight feet wide, you know?
Yeah, I definitely think you'd want, if you can, the widest you can get with green and trees. Is very large.
Yeah. I mean, you could do it in phases too. I mean, like, uh, you could take, you know, maybe the phase where people speed up the most, you know? Closer to, you know, the Fox Hollow connection, say. And start the boulevard, you know, Ray could do it, do some every two, three years maybe, you know, put another section in, you know?
Yeah. Hey David, what, what's the, what's the general width of the median on, um, Grand Boulevard? What's that pencil out to?
Oh, no. Most of that, that's huge.
It's, that's, that's very wide. I bet you that's, that's over 20 feet wide. They have double plantings. I can measure it tomorrow.
I just don't want to walk ourselves into a, to a, to a sand trap where we're proposed a reasonably good idea. And then there's a, there's a, a further action which require a condemnation to get something feasible, but okay, that's something to pursue.
Yeah. The, the only drawback to a boulevard is that you're forcing traffic one way. So anyone that lives, say in the middle of Windsor would have to come out of their driveway and take either the right, you know, the right-hand turn and go down to the end of the block to then turn around and go back. But again.
I'm sure the, uh, the effect of that boulevard would more, more than please somebody, David. I mean, uh, it really makes the street look beautiful, you know, and increase the property values, you know, slow the traffic. I can't see somebody complaining about driving an extra hundred feet for the turnaround, you know?
Oh, come on Joel, you've been in this unit long enough. People complain about sidewalks.
I want to retract it as soon as I said it.
Hey, um, one question I had is, you know, we're, we're talking about traffic and boulevards, as Laura mentioned, uh, you know, it's something that can, that we can recommend and incorporate into any planning documents and as we go forward. Uh, but, um, it won't be a, um, um, as part, you know, funded as part of, of this application, um, right now.
Right.
The, um, the, the, the two cuts going onto River Road and that's a county road there. So those would have to be approved by the county. Right, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I obviously we're taking a look at site distance from a safety standpoint, but uh, the county would actually sign off on that they're okay with those, that, right?
But, and actually the county planner reached out to the county just preliminarily with the plan that I sent and the county's preference was one cut, one traffic cut. And, and Joel and I had talked about, because after the complete streets meeting, we were looking at, he realigned the bike path. I'm just going to pull this up really fast because I'm sure everybody's tired of looking at my face. Hold on.
And Laura, Creighton Manning brought up the site distance for that realignment. See if you can bring that up.
Yeah. So, um, just this realignment here is not the greatest place for the sidewalk. So we talked about, again, crossing sort of the Windsor Drive extension here. Bringing the multi-use path down over to here and making this the primary connection again. It's just from a complete street standpoint. It's really just the safest thing to do. And it also allows people from Riverdale and all those places to be able to get, you know, to this neighborhood and up into Windsor without having to cross River Road. Um.
If, if you can bring up the next map to show them though.
It, not this one?
No, I'm saying for the, the previous map shows the
Oh, yes, I can. Yes, I can. Yeah, hold on.
Go to the next map.
Yeah, I will. Okay. I see what you're saying.
There it is.
This way. Yeah.
Yeah. So we go back to that.
Mm-hmm. Uh, but
Actually, actually that plan will be done tomorrow and I'll send it to you guys tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, but if, if the county, you know, if the county limits it to one um, to one access point, it's obviously going to be the one that has the better site distance.
And that's one access point in addition to the cuts for the two s- uh, s- single family residences in, to the north?
Yeah. He didn't mention anything about driveways. They seem to have a lot less concern with driveways.
Joel, did, have you even contemplated, um, how would achieve your, your average density, um, with one cut?
Um, I don't see their logic in only requiring one cut, Laura. Um.
It was very preliminary. I mean, your engineer would obviously probably make the application to them. Um, but you would probably want to do that sooner rather than later.
I mean, are they, do they want like a, a straighter shot through to Windsor? I thought our whole intent was to put a bunch of, uh, traffic calming turns into this, you know, so people don't use it as a cut through.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that it would be the end of the world if instead of having the, I'll, I know it's not the east, um, part of the circle, but I'm just going to say the east part of the circle, like if you just made that in a cul-de-sac that didn't touch River Road and then the main point of access was that one, you still have all the bends that you would normally have.
Yeah. I mean, Laura, we, we had brought up some of these, I think, the first time this was ever put in front of us. And there, there are some, I mean, I remember I, I started off being a proponent for a single cut, but there are some drawbacks and it will isolate one side of
It does.
that neighborhood.
Yeah, it does. There's no question. Hmm. I mean, it's probably just worth the conversation with the county because you know, they're the ultimate authority there.
Yeah, but I think with, with the right side of the loop connection, I thought we addressed our concerns with that median. It, you know, there's going to be no left-hand turn into oncoming, uh, crossing oncoming traffic. You know, from that right-hand side of the loop.
Yeah. And I think that helps a lot, but I would say probably have Nick Costa reach out now to understand what, you know, what they're thinking.
Okay. I'll have Nick and Creighton Manning talk to them then, okay? But I don't understand the, the desire for only one connection, you know?
Well, the county is always going to want to make sure that you're doing, it's sort of like the minimum, you know, the minimum variance. Like they're always going to say like, well, can you make it one cut? I mean, you have to have a good reason. And maybe you do. I just think your engineer should probably reach out to them.
I mean, I'm trying to give $500 on a road cut for them. I mean, it, we're putting 25 houses in here and bringing the revenue to the town, you know, so I really don't understand that comment, but we'll try to work with them and figure it out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I think with, you know, Laura's point, sooner the better, you know?
Straight through shot to Windsor though, you know?
Right.
I don't think any, I mean, Paul does.
Another aspect of it is that the town doesn't really encourage dead ends.
Yeah.
The safety factors. So I don't understand the county's point of view either.
So I'm, I'm saying it was just very preliminary when I was having a conversation with them. And I think that's just their normal response, but because it is their normal response, you probably want to reach out sooner rather than later.
Okay. Laura, do you want to mention that we're going to clean up that stub on Windsor too? So we're gonna, we're gonna move the bike, we're gonna cross Windsor with the bike path. And put the bike path down the left-hand side of the loop and only have one crossing. And we're going to take off that stub that we left on Windsor. Remember where you said somebody could put their basketball hoop or where there's a basketball hoop currently?
Yeah, right in here. Did you get a chance to talk to Nick and see if the full tee is prohibited? Yeah, we're talking about this little thing right here.
Yeah. Yeah. So you would want it to come straight up and take more of the town land and tee like do a 90-degree angle instead of a radius?
Yeah, kind of like tee right into here. I mean, we had said with a stop sign because obviously it's
What if, what if we left the, the first curve and then we tee right into that stub?
So leave this curve and then tee right into this dub.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll ask him why, why he didn't want to do that.
Cause we're just looking at making it as tortuous as possible. So we're connecting the neighborhoods, but discouraging any through traffic.
Yeah, yeah. But having a non, a non 90-degree intersection there, I think is not good. I think you want to make that a 90-degree intersection onto the stub.
Yeah, right here. This is where we're talking, right here.
Right, right there. Yep.
Joel is offering to put in a, uh, a median boulevard.
Oh, I, I didn't hear that part.
Would you consider Joel extending any boulevard, uh, if it ever came to that into your development?
Maybe just on the stub as a preliminary and see how it looks.
Yeah, with the, with the 90, um,
No, with the 90.
Talking about like DOT rules, like if you don't have a stop sign there, I don't think you can put a 90-degree turn in without a radius, you know what I mean?
I know.
Yeah, no, no, you'll, you'll, you're gonna have to have a stop sign.
Yeah, we want, yeah, a stop sign would be good.
You can't, you can't put a stop sign in if it's not a three-way intersection either though.
Oh, I don't understand. I probably should.
Well, that's, that's that's what we'll take a look at, you know, we'll get those questions answered, uh, whether it's appropriate, whether it's legal, um. We do know that, uh, the tighter that bend is, the more traffic calming it's going to have, because you're going to have to slow down to take the corner. And if it's appropriate to put a stop sign in, then we'll do everything we can. And, and so we'll just, you know, we'll get the answer to those questions.
Tomorrow Laura, okay?
Oh yeah. Okay. So tee intersection with potential stop sign if possible, and then swapping the bike path. Um, and then not as much wetland disturbance with this plan, which is good. And then, um.
And so I just want to highlight too, uh, Laura, so people don't fall off their tables later is that with this new, uh, torturous S path, we turned the townhouses sideways. And with the additional road frontage, we ended up with another lot. So we're at 25.
Well, you, you would have to go to the zoning board for variance then, because your lot isn't based on how much you can fit. It's based on your, um, subdivision plan and what the planning board determines as the buildable lots under a regular subdivision or one subdivision.
So we, so if you go down two more plans, we started with 28 and and we, we had some discussion on how many buildable lots could get out of that then, or?
Yeah, I think we, we had a long discussion and it's in the minutes that the planning board, I think, approved tonight. Um, I mean, my recommendation is really, I like to point three, but I think the planning board decided to let you go ahead with 24 because some of them have the potential to, um, have a small, have the, you know, a small kind of wetland swap with the Army Corps of Engineer that would allow them to be buildable.
So now that, now that I have to put a longer road in and more work and everything, and we ended up with the availability of an extra lot. I gotta give it up.
The planning board, I mean, the planning board and the town board can't waive that. That's the zoning code. You'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals and argue that you had financial hardship to meet the requirements of the zoning code and you wanted to fix a lot.
How's the financial hardship? I, I show you 28 lot, lots for R1. Okay. So then it's, then it's a matter of conjecture whether or not I can build on all 28 of those.
So I can pull up the code if you want, or I mean, we
Let me ask a question differently. Laura, you said, uh, uh, hard, uh, economic hardship. Is it an area variance or a use variance for an extra lot?
It would be an area variance.
All right. So that's, that's, that's basically, um, uh, I want to say it's easier, but more flexible, uh, since finances aren't involved.
Oops, there it is.
So my personal view is, is that, you know, I don't commit to anything yet. Let's, uh, you know, if that's a possibility, let's just, you know, play out, uh, the engineering and see where we actually land. And if that's something that would benefit everybody, we, we could, we could have that conversation at that time. It sounds like we're not there yet.
Yeah. So when we touched on this before.
Why would you not, why would you deny the town revenue, the tax rep view from that extra house? I mean?
Well, it's, it's the code. It's not whether or not it's right or testifiable, or I like somebody or don't like someone. It says the maximum number of dwellings will be determined from the preparation of a conventional subdivision draft plan of the project area. And the, and, um, the number of dwelling units permitted are then added together. And so the planning department has to take into account. Um, land is situated and conforming to all other applicable requirements, consideration of terrain, topography, drainage, flooding potential and other natural conditions must be considered in determining the maximum number of dwellings in the project. And we looked at your plan and there's wetlands and streams in there. And I think that 23 to 24 is all that you can realistically fit with the way that the property actually fits. I mean, the planning board can jump in, but we had a long conversation about it.
Yeah. Where we ended up was 20, 24. That's where we ended up. And all I'm saying is that you still got, you still got engineering to do. Uh, if, you know, you go through your engineering and you say, gee, Eureka, there isn't a problem like a 25, we can talk about it then Joel. But right now, uh, what we've agreed to is 24. So let's, you know, it's, it's, it's a work in progress. I think the long haul is really the traffic thing, even to make a recommendation to the, uh, the town board, even get it that far, right? So, but if you continue on your engineering.
Kevin, do I take a lot out?
Cause it's just twenty-five now?
Do I drop a lot?
That's your call, Joel. I mean, you're gonna have to decide if the lot is important enough to you that you wanna take it to the zoning board. Or if you wanna plan for a conforming subdivision right now. It's your call.
Laura and Joel, there's one other thing I'd like, along those same lines, right where, um, um, the town-owned property, right at the bend that you just set up from the drawing, Laura?
Yeah, here.
Yep.
It's right here.
And there was some discussion early on, again, I'm not trying to benefit the, the applicant, it's just a discussion here. Uh, you know, it might be suitable for a single family there to join the community there too. Is that, is there something that?
That's easily, Kevin, I'll do that. Part that I send over backwards to do everything and add all these extras and everything, and we. Did you, it added revenue for the town and it just shut down, but. I'll take a duplex on the end of the, uh, connection and turn it into a single-family lot then.
Okay, um, on the triangle, Kevin, you, um. Just from having walked that, it looks almost like a four-bay to a drainage basin, so.
Say that again, Laura, I didn't hear.
On that triangle lot, I'll just, this triangle lot right here, like we've talked about it before. It's not flat, it seems to have some kind of a four-bay potentially to a drainage basin. So I don't know that it's particularly usable to being developed, I definitely think your engineer probably should just take a look at what that lot's being used for. To me, it looked like it had, um, a man-made berm and was potentially, um, collecting water. You know how like the four-bays are less? They're not used as often?
It's not on the Win, it's not on the Windsor plan as a retention basin.
Yeah, just have him take a look at it, and if it's not, it's not. I was just standing there and I thought it looked a little bit like a four-bay. So you just wanna make sure that you're not negatively impacting any drainage.
I, we, we have the plans for Windsor, okay? And it's not a retention basin, it's a drainage feature, but to make that connection, all the. We have to move all the utilities, you know, cause all the, all the utilities are on that side of the road right there.
You're right here.
We have to, yeah, so we have to dig up all the, uh, electric, the gas, the cable.
Yeah, I'm okay.
There is a, there is a thirty, twenty-four or thirty-inch culvert under the road there too, that we have to rebuild then too.
Yeah, thirty-four inch.
How many inches?
Thirty-four, yes, thirty-four. Well, maybe it's twenty-four. It could be twenty-four. That would be more normal.
It's big, it's big.
It's twenty-four, twenty-four. This guy right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-four.
Uh, Laura and Joel, when it comes to the question of twenty-four, twenty-five lot, I'm just taking a look. Was used to calculate the number of.
Wait, can, uh, well, can you, before you summarize, can you, Patrick had another question, can you hear him? Go ahead, Patrick.
Okay.
Joel, um, you know, I, I'm just taking a quick look at this subdivision plan you, you had. Uh, completed to calculate average density, uh, develop the number of lots. And, uh, you know, with your minimum lot size of eighteen thousand, um. You still have a couple lots that are approaching fifty thousand square feet and, um. What, that the, this subdivision plan I'm looking at did not contemplate was a connector to Windsor Drive, which. You know, I think if you revisit this, um, and you can, I'm no engineer, but if you can, out of lot number five. Um, maybe with a connection from Windsor to the, um, the roundabout road. Through lot number seven or lot number six, somehow scratch out an extra lot. It, it, it appears to me that you came up with twenty-eight lots, but four of which fall. Yeah, are primarily comprised of wetlands, and that's twenty-four.
So twenty-eight, twenty-seven, nine, and eight.
But, but, you know, there are a few lots that are, are far beyond the minimum lot size required and, um. It just seems to me that you might be able to scratch out a twenty-ninth lot from this subdivision plan, so. If, if you, if you wanna see.
What if we do that, Laura, can we get twenty-five back?
Potentially, I mean, the planning board's looking at this plan that's on the screen right now, and they're saying. Lots twenty-eight, twenty-seven, nine, and eight are not buildable, and I think that's very fair, or it was fourteen, it might have been fourteen, cause that wetland's right in the middle. Um, but if you can come up with a different conventional plan that shows, um. Twenty-five buildable lots, then the planning board is well within its rights to say, okay.
And include the connection from Windsor, that could be more road frontage.
Yeah.
I don't wanna back up.
It's your call.
It's your call, Joel, you know, so what I, what I'm hearing is that, you know, we're willing to listen, you know, uh, is, is what I'm hearing, you know, cause we understand. Um, but again, the, uh, you got a lot of engineering to do, and, uh, main thing is, you know, getting a, a reasonable, uh, traffic assessment. So that we can move this forward, cause I know, uh, you, just like all applicants, wanna move this forward as soon as possible, so. Really, uh, you know, you're, you're in control here right now with the traffic assessment.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, and, um, uh, your thing, I think, that was going on is the Conservation Advisory Council are gonna take a hard look at this at the May meeting, is that correct, Laura? You have the date on that approximately, or? I don't know if you're aware of that or not, Joel, you may wanna be there also for that.
Uh, next Conservation Advisory Council meeting is May sixth. It will have to be virtual, because everything has to be virtual until pause is lifted. So the May sixth Conservation Advisory Council will still have to be virtual, our next planning board meeting will still have to be virtual. And we're not really sure what'll happen after the fifteenth, but.
You just sent me an invite, I'll attend.
Okay, sure, Will.
Okay, um, I'm just looking at my notes, I mean, uh, we talked about, I mean, primary, again, the traffic study is the biggie here. Um. And, uh, you know, keeping it moving forward, is, is there something I'm missing? David, Patrick, uh, the applicant?
I think what I'm looking at. By the town code. We're supposed to move on the preliminary within sixty days of the public hearing. We have the public hearing on March ninth, so. We're supposed to make a decision by May ninth. You know, recommend and, or, so.
So Joel, I mean, you can set a timeline if you want, and we have to make a recommendation on the data that we have, which is obviously. Not favorable, um. You know.
Cause we don't have the data, right?
Tell me the timeline, so I understand the timeline right now, but. I mean, I get you the revised plan with these comments tomorrow, and then we go to the CAC on May sixth. And what happens after that?
Um, so, I mean, the planning board's next step is they need to make a recommendation to the town board, um.
What date is that?
Joel, this, Joel, this is Paul Briggs. So when you're considering the, when you're considering the action on the. The recommendations of the town board, um, the code says it has to be, the. Planning board should do that with, with, within a reasonable time, but the reasonable time is upon receipt of any material or additional. Material that the planning board asks, uh, the applicant to submit, so the. The code contemplates the, uh, having the recommendation done. Within a reasonable time, which normally would be in the, within the next meeting, but when there's additional material required, it extends that timeout. But there's no set timeline.
Respectively, uh, respectfully read the rest of the, the code though, it says. But, but no longer than sixty days, or else it automatically. Becomes a positive declaration that the preliminary, preliminary plan is approved.
But that's, 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 but you also have to read the fact that it says within a reasonable time of the receipt of the above material. And of any additional material, it has required the applicant to submit. So that doesn't mean, under your argument, Joel, the applicant could just delay putting the material in for sixty days and then. The decision's made, so it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, but I think what Laura was just saying too, Paul, is that. The planning board could just say no, until we have to work together, and I understand that, so I'm just asking Laura now, what is the schedule?
Um, so are, or it is, um, May, oops, correct. May, yeah, May eleventh, and we actually only have one meeting in May, um, so we could. Here, if you wanna look, is your traffic study gonna be done by May eleventh?
Yeah, well, no.
Probably not, so we can.
Does the traffic study have to be completed for the preliminary though?
Well, I think so, because we have to understand.
I've never seen that before, Laura.
Well, because it, there's a huge difference between whether we recommend to the town board on making the connection to Windsor or keeping it as a loop. We need that data in order to be able to make a recommendation, that's why the planning board has, has requested it. It's very important to the recommendation to the town board on the configuration that we're considering.
Okay, so if it comes in and says there's gonna be a hundred more cars. You know, per day, section or two hundred more, what does the quantitative amount have to do with it, okay? It's whether or not. You know, the town or the planning board wants the connection. I, I, I don't see how the traffic study's gonna affect that decision.
Well, we, you know, in order to, to make a solid recommendation, we need to understand what we're recommending, right? Whether it's a hundred cars, a hundred fifty, we, we just need to understand, you know, just to be common sense, uh. To, to know that, uh, you know, we stand behind what we're recommending in this town board. Uh, if there's some surprise that comes out of this, uh, it may change some of, some of our decisions, I can only speak for myself. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, if your traffic study shows a thousand cars are gonna be headed to Windsor Drive, like on eight AM or something. I think the planning board would say, okay, not worth it, like, we have to be able to evaluate what we're recommending.
Yeah, so let's, let's dedicate it on completion of the traffic study then, so. Tell me the schedule based on the traffic study then.
What's your approximate date for completing the traffic study?
I originally told them to have it done by. Yeah, uh, May twenty-seventh.
Um, so the public needs can jump in, but you have, May twenty-seventh, you'd have, I'd say, you know. Look at the traffic study in early June, and then probably a recommendation at the end of June. And if we're comfortable that that's the timeline, we can also work with the town board's schedule so that.
Here, you know, I mean, it's like, so you're saying. You, you're gonna make your recommendation a month after I give you the traffic.
Well, Laura, isn't there, it, it, do, also have to be mindful of the fact that a lot of people in the public may not be fully able to access these. I understand we're trying to make these, like, publicly available, but we all have to understand as well that there's a lot of people in the public who may not fully. Be able to have, you know, look, go and look at these as part too. I mean, I think now, I, cause I think this developer is trying to accuse us of being unreasonable, and I think after a lot of things to factor into. And we have to consider, you know, and understand, Laura.
Um, I mean, the planning board is just, or Mo is concerned that there's a lot of, you know, issues that we have to look at. And there's public comments that we have to consider, and that things slowed down on COVID, like, under no fault of the towns. It's harder to have public meetings, it's harder to receive public comments. And we need to make sure that we're meeting the laws and requirements of New York State under pause and under the public open meetings law. In order to be able to properly consider this, it's a really important undertaking, and we need to get it right.
We have a meeting on May.
Sorry, Joel, go ahead, Patrick.
We have a meeting on May eleventh, and then we, um, we do not have a meeting again for almost a month, June eighth.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, based on what we're hearing from the applicant, we should receive that final traffic study. Um, with ample time to review prior to the June eighth meeting. But, um, yeah, that, there's just no way that we could make a recommendation prior to June eighth. And, um. Even still, there, there's no requirement for the town, town board, um. Correct, for, for any further we have on this?
I mean, it's a long process, the town board process itself is typically three months. We can try and work with our timeline. If the traffic study is looking, like, it will come in at the end of May, we can try and align our recommendation with their calling for a public hearing. You can potentially, like, have a recommendation from the planning board at the end of June. Um, and then still have the town board call for the public hearing at the end of June, so that they can hold their public hearing in July. That timeline isn't vastly different than what the timeline would be right now. I mean, it's just the way that the meetings lay out. I mean, you need to have that data in order for both the planning board and the town board to be able to. Call, you know, have a recommendation and call for a public hearing, you have to have that.
Mark, it tells that the town, the town board public hearing was scheduled for April twenty-ninth.
No, that was never on any town board resolution, we talked about that at the planning board meeting. Um, and we talked about it on the agenda meeting because we thought that we were discussing the connection. But, you know, public concerns and the planning board's decision was we need to have this data, that's a decision that was made.
Wow.
So I think that, um, you know, we've had meaningful discussions for the planning board meeting, so we can have an offline conversation with Paul Briggs. But unless there's, um, more discussion on the, on the, on the, on the placenter before us. I think that we've probably wrapped up this item, what do you think, Kevin?
Yeah, I think so, and, and Joel, you know, we got project leads, uh, David and Patrick, and, and of course Laura and myself. We can, like Laura just stated, we can have some offline discussion, uh, but the bottom line is, the long haul right now on the ten is to get the traffic study to us. And, uh, and Laura will work with Mr. Briggs, like, as, as they have done in the past, where they've called for a public hearing, even though all the information is. Because I know, uh, town board, the meeting may be a month away, so we can do that, help streamline it the best we can, and they always do, so. Um, let's just get the traffic data and keep it moving forward.
That's, that's exactly what I was gonna say, and I think that was, was the previous plan. Was to move, move forward with the town board public hearing, you know, schedule it.
Okay, Joel, I, I don't wanna spin, you've had this conversation and we can have it offline, I think we're just talking about the, the plan now.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, Joel? What else does anybody have? Any other questions for Joel, David, Patrick? Hang in there, Joel, get, get the traffic data to us, we'll do the best we can to keep it moving forward. Uh, but you know, you, you don't, we don't wanna go to the, make a recommendation to town board of all the information, uh, you know, then it just might, you might end up, uh. You know, spinning the wheels and actually delaying the project, so let's, you know, let's do it right, okay?
Okay.
Alright, alright, is there anything else, Joel, that you have right now?
Uh, no.
Alright, thank you, Joel, and, uh, thank you, everybody, on that one. Alright, we're gonna move on in the agenda then, alright, and we have, uh, reports. Uh, and under reports, we got Laura, you wanted to mention Ace Hardware fourteen forty-eight, Baltimore Road.
Yeah, Joel, is it okay for you to turn the volume up on your computer? I think he's gone, okay, sorry, I didn't wanna hang up on him. So the report on Ace Hardware is just that it's been a while, the zoning board meetings were canceled, um, the same way that the planning board meeting was canceled. But the Ace Hardware is scheduled to be reviewed by the zoning board on this Wednesday, so they'll take a look at the average, um, setback. As it relates to the greenhouse, and then we would hopefully see Ace Hardware back before you guys in May or early June.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the update, Laura.
Right, and Laura, I know we actually had a pretty good meeting tonight, time-wise, uh, is there anything else you, you, you feel that we need to talk about in reports tonight?
No, I think that we can, um, hopefully do privilege of the floor better, but it did. Um, the governor did come out with another, um. Like mandate on virtual meetings that the public has to be allowed to participate in the privilege of the floor. So we didn't have to cancel our planning board meeting or our zoning board meetings, because we had offered the public a way to participate in the meeting. That doesn't include just submitting their written comments, so I know it was a little awkward, but I think we wanna keep trying, we have to, well, we have to keep trying to do that.
Yeah, one, one suggestion was, I know that you did like a test run with, uh, different. Yeah, one, one suggestion was, I know that you did like a test run with, uh, different, uh, applicants in the public. Is that, uh, in addition to the test run, just have everybody log in maybe, uh, you know, ten minutes early, so you get all the little bugs out, because that's kind of seemed like, uh, you know, we, we were there, but uh, it's uh, when we wait to the last minute, so and that we can do, we can all do test runs all together, make sure we, uh, go smoothly, you know?
A- and I think one thing we just need to clarify is how people can unmute themselves. Because I think that was part of it, people were on, but you couldn't hear them. Because, a- and because it, it's literally a, a, you know, it, it's, it's not as simple as just a screen button push in some cases, so if you're calling by phone, it's.
Because I think for some reason, some meetings, when you come in, you can come in however, but in like, these live stream meetings, when you come in, you come in muted, and I can't unmute you, you have to unmute yourself. And it sounds like it's very difficult to unmute yourself when you're on the phone, because how would you know, six, seven thing, how would you know that?
Yeah, it also seems when, you know, somebody may have their computer on and they're on phone trying to work it out one way or the other, that's when we run into the feedback problem.
Right, right, I mean, for whatever it's worth, what I, what I experienced this afternoon is actually there's actually two phone numbers for this meeting. There is, like, right now you see me, I'm showing up with my phone number. So that's the generic phone number that's actually in the email invite, that, that slash six four at the end, that's me. You guys are seeing me talk, right? Yeah, so before that used to have my name, so what happens is when you actually go to the meeting invite and you click the link, and you're gonna call in, it gives you a special number that's attached to your name. And that's how I was in until like, ten minutes ago, it disconnected me. So, so I think there's a, so that's the other thing, there are, a person I think can come into this meeting either with a generic phone number or a special phone number that links to their name. So.
Yeah, so we should get those, so we, we should get those steps clarified, and maybe we can put that in the instructions to people when they're logging in, we can just come up with like generic instructions. All I do have to say, because of the governor's mandate, I guess Google meets is not as friendly to allowing a lot of people to participate, um.
Yeah, it, it's, well, it's, it's good for the streaming, but not for the, um, but not for participation.
Yeah, so.
And I have, and Laura, I have a real fear about the pub, a lot of people in the public thinking that we're trying to pull a fast one on them. And I think that, that's what the last little bit, like, really brought home, when, when a developer's really kind of getting a little pushy about his projects not being approved fast enough, we are living in an unprecedented time here. And I think we, we already have people come to our meetings, it, under the best of circumstances, and think we're trying to pull a fast one on them. I think we, under these circumstances, we have, we need to be extremely careful about that we are ma, giving the public as much chance and opportunity, and I think for a lot of particularly, particularly recognizing that a lot of people come to our meeting, maybe older, may not be as easily, you find the technology as, as usable. So I just think we need to be very, very mindful of that.
Yeah, there's no question, I, I actually talked to someone who was older, who wanted to talk at the planning board meeting today, and I could not convince her to go and, and use this technology, so there's no question about that. Um, and I, I do think we need to be very mindful about that, and the governor keeps coming out with different directives every day. Um, so all of those things roll up into, um, we need to do it right, and we need to have all the data before us. And I appreciate Paul Briggs, like, stepping in and making sure that, that is conveyed clearly to the developer.
Yeah, I mean, the, I, I was a little, I didn't say anything because it would have just, you know, I think raised the tension, but I was a little taken aback, because clearly wherever the timeline is in the code, we are not operating under that timeline due to circumstances. All right, so, so I think any, any discussion around that becomes a little bit unreasonable, I, I cited a little bit of Mo on that one.
Yep, I mean, we're doing the best we can, and I appreciate, uh, planning office and the IT department with the town working hard on this, uh, no.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, so we might actually switch software, too. Um, I'll let you guys know if that does happen, and then we'll have to retrain, but there are softwares that are a little bit better about, um, allowing, um, a greater number of people to sort of come in under privilege of the floor and then have, you know, because right now, when people come to privilege of the floor, they could theoretically speak throughout the entire meeting, which, I find to be fine, but like, you can control things a little better with some of the other software, so we might as well.
Okay, any other questions under reports for Laura? I think we're pretty good shape for tonight, uh, we know, we'll make sure we reach out and talk to each other, um, one of the open items was Mr. Khan and Laura, like, regarding that Crescent. We'll see if we can get together with Mr. Herb, right, and, uh, take a walk over there, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you could arrange Frank's time, and then get a couple of times for him to work, and then we can just, I'll try to be as flexible as I can.
Yep, okay, all right, Laura, anything else under reports?
No, I think that covers everything for me, I really appreciate how flexible you guys are with all the software and everything we do, and I think I've heard positive feedback about our meeting, so we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, and I appreciate all you guys' hard work.
Yep, and thank you, all right, I'll move on to commission business, and I'll go down my list here, Mr. Oster, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Diarpino?
No, nothing.
All right, Mr. McPartlin?
Uh, I, I don't have anything, but I did have a question, so I guess it would have fallen under reports, just about the, um, news article all, um, surrounding the finalization of this Knott Street Improvement Project. Um, I was just wondering, is the town, or are any of the, um, businesses impacted in this corridor? On making any matching investments to, um, you know, any, make any further improvements to the corridor, or are we kind of just taking what the county gives us? Um, and, uh, of being, be happy with that?
Um, yeah, so the town, so the, the funding for Knott Street, it comes from the county, is limited to the right-of-way, and that's just a federal requirement of the grant. It has to be what's considered like an on-street, on-grid, um, road, which means it has to have a certain threshold of cars designated on their maps. So their funding can't extend beyond the right-of-way of Knott Street. Um, Metroplex has recognized that and put in, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with the sidewalks, because they obviously change. Sidewalks are on private property, so Met, so Metroplex is, uh, in a, in a large part um, helping with the, you know, the sidewalks and, um, the town's role is to look at the Via Del Mar connection and the Clifton, Clifton Crescent, um, and then there's like an alleyway that goes behind the co-op. So we need to let that configuration, there's a possibility that we can add more parking spots there, and that we can neck down the connection between Clifton and Crescent, make it safer, um, either with painting or with medians and plantings. Um, but those things have to be, I think, considered in conjunction with this project, and we've been talking about what their timeline is versus what our timeline is, timeline is, to figure out how all of these parts and pieces connect, yeah, there's, there's multiple funding and pieces to this project that, uh, we work on, the county, you know, has their choice of the plan that's going forward. Um, and then I think we have to figure out how our decisions and funding can fit into that piece, because you obviously, I think, would want everything to be done all at once, so that the, the impact to the, to the neighbors and the businesses as minimal as possible.
As, as a follow-up, did you receive, um, the latest plans, Laura?
I have not, and I need to look at that, admittedly, I haven't even read the county's, um, press release, but I will look at it.
Yeah, there was no map in, in the article, it was just, uh, you know, verbs, you know, verbiage, so that'd be great to, you know, if you have anything to pass along to us, I'm sure, and to the town board, um.
I will see if I can get ahold of a copy of, of the map, and I will email it to you guys. On the outside, and I do think the town is aware of them, and is trying to coordinate what they need to do with this project as well, if that answers your question, Patrick.
Yeah, I think it does, I guess the Metroplex funds are certainly, uh, probably a boon to the, the business, private businesses. Um, um, attached to the co-op there. Um, but, but I, yeah, that Clifton Park Crescent Road intersection, it, it, this conversation seems timely, given that they're also considering how a, a proposed the development of the, the CN, uh, district there. It's in, um, yeah, I think, I think we do need to look at that, but the few times I travel, um, that way, it just seems like a, a big sea with no real clear direction, it could really be tightened up somehow.
It's unsafe for cars and people and bicycles, like, there's no clear way to get on streets, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, uh, Mr. McPartlin?
No, thank you.
Thank you, and let's see, um, Mr. Khan?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
And Mr. Scrubu Tennis? Okay. Mike, you there, Mike, still? I don't, don't see him, I think I might have looked.
He may have had. Yeah, I don't see him either.
Okay, and let's see, and, uh, Mr. Leflam, is he still there? Yeah, Chris is still there.
Still here, and no, no further comment.
Anything else, okay, and I, and I have nothing else except for thank you to everybody, that was a good meeting, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Khan.
Motion by Mr. Khan and seconded by? Seconded by Mr. Leflam, all those in favor of, um, adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, I'll adjourn the, uh, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty meeting at nine forty-six PM, thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, thank you, yeah, take care, stay safe, everyone.
I was just gonna ask if, if we could call the roll for that, because I'm not sure how many people were still on.
Okay.
Does that not, does that not matter?
I think the only one we lost was, um, was, uh, Mr. Scrubu Tennis on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Laura, thanks, Clark. All right, have a good night.
Kevin.
All right. See you later.
Bye.
Bye.
You know what I was thinking, Laura? Are you still there, Laura?
Yeah, let me stop the livestream, hold on, I always forget to do this, okay, here we go. And record.
Is Joel still on, too?